Welcome back, Mr. Sayah. Welcome back.
Thank you.
How was Italy? It's good. So you got the nice native land color, you know? Very nice. How are you going?
Yeah, what's going on now?
Touch, touch. We'll be for the next phase of things, you know?
Yeah, yeah. See where it brings.
Yeah. Man, he just doesn't give up, does he?
My friend? I haven't read anything.
He's challenging his hands.
Oh, yes.
Michael, congratulations.
Thank you. Good work, yeah. Congratulations. Thank you.
Correctly, please do the roll call, please.
Mr. President, council meeting of 11:12:19. Counsel Capone.
Yep.
Counsel DeFlorio. Counsel DePiero.
Here.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezey. Counsel Marquezey? Here somewhere. Counsel Matuski.
Here.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yeah.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counsel Appolitano.
Here.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yeah.
And President Delasola.
Here.
We have 11 members present. Sir, we do have a poll.
Please stand and salute the flag.
May I just say, this is the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and endless.
Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. As is customary, could we invite the council's elect to stand within the chamber?
Counsel Capone?
Well, I just heard my colleagues mentioning Sal. Grandmother. Larry Scott. Yeah, nice guy.
Stand for a moment of silence, please.
Mr. President, I move to accept the previous meeting's minutes.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it.
No one invited on Friday.
I'd like to... Counsel Capone? Do we have a motion on?
Yeah, the motion was to invite the council's elect in the chamber.
All seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Just please come up to the front desk and we'll introduce you. Just take a seat each there and just state your name, your address, and the seat you'll be taking in 2020 as a city councillor.
Stephanie Martin, 70 Lexington Street, Everett, War II City Councillor.
Jimmy Trylee, 41 Westover Street, War IV City Councillor.
I just want to congratulate you guys for both the winning. I just want to wish you luck in the future as a city councillor, starting first week in January. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Correctly, give me the first piece of business, please.
Motion open to public hearing.
Motion.
Oh, I did, okay.
We did.
The public hearing is first. Second, on the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item number one, Mr. President, is a petition. Counsel Richard D. Delasola is president. Petition for National Grid and Verizon to construct a line of underground electric conduits, including the necessary sustaining protecting fixtures under and across the public ways or ways here and after named Beecham Street and Bannon Street. They were also... They were on here for four others, so I don't know if you want to take them collectively?
Yeah, if...
If we could take them all collectively?
Well, just so you know, well, National Grid is on for all of them. Verizon is on for five of them, so I don't know. I mean, you can take them all if you want to. It doesn't matter to me. Just whatever you think is...
So 1 through 5 is National Grid?
Yeah. National Grid is also 6 through 8, but not Verizon?
National Grid and Verizon.
Yeah.
They're both?
Counsel Capone, what's your pleasure?
I'd suggest, yeah, I'd suggest we take items 1 through 5 collectively.
1 through 5, have a second?
Aye, second.
All the ayes have it. Take 1 through 5 collectively.
Number two, Mr. President, is petition for National Grid and Verizon to construct a line of underground electric conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under, across the public ways here and named after Behan Street. Number three is National Grid and Verizon desires to install a 1JO pole on Bow Street, number 997, lay underground laterals, cables, and wires, and above intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petition is made desire for distributing purposes. Item number four, National Grid and Verizon desires to install 1JO pole on Langdon Street, pole number 3166, and to lay underground laterals, cables, and wires, and above intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petition is made desire for distributing purposes. And item number five is that National Grid and Verizon desires to install 1JO pole on Bow Street, pole number 996, and to lay underground laterals, cables, and wires, and above intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petition is made desire for distributing purposes.
Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we please have the petitions before us?
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Just please state your name and the company you work for.
Good evening, I'm Tim Williamson, representing National Grid at 170 Medford Street in Malden.
Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our invited guests. Before we open it up to a public hearing for the audience to be able to weigh in on it, could you please just give an overview of exactly what you're looking to do?
Yep, definitely. I'll just note, I'm here for items 1 through 5, as you know. I think some of the wording might have gotten mixed up when they were translated into the agenda, because these are, these five items are actually, they're each poles. None of them are conduit in the underground, so they're just five individual separate poles. And number five, pole 996, is actually an SO pole, National Grid only. So, just little housekeeping items, but they don't really... That can get sorted out, because all the paperwork shows all the poles. So I think it's just they got translated wrong into the agenda. So each of the locations is a single individual pole, and they are in line with the existing course of line to shore up long spans or to improve guying issues that are out there in the existing system. So they're, you know, it's not like new courses of line or anything. It's all just individual new poles in the existing line.
Okay. And what kind of timeframe for each of these projects?
This work is scheduled to start April 1st, 2020.
And how long of a duration do you expect?
These are part of two larger jobs in the lower Broadway area, in Bow Street and the whole industrial area. So they do have a long duration, but each location would only be, you know, a few days or a week of work.
Okay. I don't have any questions my colleagues can ask.
Thank you. Counsel Florio, and then Counsel Hanlon.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Where these weren't advertised the proper way. But there's changes. So it was...
No, all the butters and everything, your copy, your copies of all the, that they had sent out previously, knowing all the locations and announcing it was advertised, and all the butters and all this stuff.
They were all notified?
The public hearing is the correct, is the correct thing. I might have, might have been, as I said, I might have transcribed a couple of them by mistake.
But they were all, they were all, the, it was all advertised properly, and all the butters were notified properly, as to the proper wording, as to the proper wording.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
I'll say it, councillor. Counsel Hanlon? And Counsel Appolitano?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Sir, if you would. Well, you just said these are going to take some time to do, have these done. You hire the police?
Oh, yeah. We have police details on all of our jobs.
Everett Police Officers?
Everett Police Officers, correct.
Do you have any security patrol at your own?
No, we generally use Everett Police for all these, yep. And we, on a big project like this, we coordinate with them ahead of time and try to give them like a week's heads up to know how many details we're needing.
I'm looking at Bow Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a...
It's a tough one. It's a narrow street. There's not a lot of places to reroute traffic, so we'll work with the police, and if we have to do work after hours, we'll do that.
That'd be good, if you could, you know? Matter of fact, the whole thing, if it were done after hours, it'd be good.
We'd like to do, we'll do as much as we can to work with the police on reasonable details and everything.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Counsel Appolitano?
Thank you. What kind of timetable are we looking at total for these five pieces?
Probably about three months, but, you know, a lot of it will get done ahead of time, and then we'll do a little, what we call conversion, where we're upgrading the old system to the newer system. This is related to the new substation that we're building next to the casino, so we have to replace a lot of the old poles and infrastructure that's been there for, you know, decades that really needs upgrades.
So this is a major upgrade?
Major upgrade.
Of the conduits down there, the wiring, the poles, the whole backyard?
Yep. Fortunately, you know, we planned ahead when we did all the major underground work with the casino, so we put in all the conduits in the underground when the casino was under construction. So we won't, we won't need to dig up any of the roads to do this, so. Thank you.
Counsel Matuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bow Street and Langdon Street are residential areas. I hope that you communicate with the people that actually live there.
Yeah, we will, we'll work with outage planning and the customer service group at National Grid to coordinate that work, and once we have a contractor onboard, they go out and, you know, scout the work and knock on doors and make sure...
Okay, because, you know, we had the casino activity for two or three years. These people have put up with a lot down there.
This one won't be as big of an impact as that, but it's basically upgrading the rest of the infrastructure that we didn't.
And the street's being repaved, so you're going to put it back in pristine condition? We're not going to have any dips in the ground?
Right, and we're not, we're not installing any conduit as part of these jobs.
Oh, even when you put a pole in, I noticed sometimes you leave gravel there and weeds grow through it.
Especially in these tight areas along the Bow Street area.
What is a JO pole? Not to interrupt.
Joint owned pole, so it's, it's set by National Grid, and Verizon has joint ownership with National Grid. An SO pole is a solely owned pole, only by National Grid.
And there's a light on the pole, too?
Uh, sometimes.
Will there be lights on these poles?
If there are, if there's a light there now, we'll transfer it to the new pole.
And the city of Everett is responsible for the light bulb?
Correct.
Are you responsible for the pole itself?
Correct.
Okay, you know, as I, I didn't catch your name, sir.
Tim Williamson.
Mr. Williamson, you know, as I drive around Everett, I notice a lot of poles are leaning.
Some of the old ones, they, in the tight areas, it was, it's always been difficult to get proper guying, so I try to address that whenever I can with new guying or increasing the size of the pole, so it won't pull over from the wires.
Well, as you...
And that's, that's actually what half of these poles are, is to improve some of the lack of guying that we have now.
Well, you notice on the agenda tonight, we have, I don't know, 30 or 40 pieces that are attaching something to a pole. So when you say it's a joint owned pole with Verizon and National Grid...
That means there's electric lines above, and then there's Verizon owned communication lines below.
So this company that's attaching something to the pole, they have responsibility too, no?
Yeah, they do. But we, I set, we set the anchors, National Grid does, so I take the guying into account with the anchors.
If you have a business card, I'd like to get that, if you don't mind.
Uh, yeah, I can check in my jacket.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor.
And if I don't have my card on me, I can send you an email with my info.
Oh, that'd be good.
We have no more questions for our guests? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel Capone?
I mean, I'm sorry, open public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Is there anybody? We'll start with number one on public hearing. Anybody in favor of this petition? Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor? That part is closed. Anybody opposed to number one on the agenda? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Nobody's opposed? One is closed. I'll go to two on the agenda. Anybody in favor of number two on the agenda? Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor? That portion is closed. Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Third time, anybody opposed? No speakers? Two is closed. I'll go to three on the agenda. Anybody in favor of three on the agenda? Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor? That portion's closed. Anybody opposed on three? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? That portion is closed on three. I'll go to four on the agenda. Anybody in favor of four on the agenda? Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor on? That portion's closed. Anybody opposed on four? Anybody opposed? Third time, anybody opposed? Four is closed. I'll go to five. Anybody in favor on five? Anybody in favor? Third time, anybody in favor? That part is closed. Anybody opposed on five? Second time, anybody opposed? Third and final time, anybody opposed? Those five are closed.
Close public hearing?
Public hearing is closed. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Favorable action on item number one?
Seconded. Okay, we'll take all in favor on one. Roll call vote on one.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Favorable action.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio. Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezey.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Appolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
No.
Counsel, President Delasola.
Yes.
10 yeas, one nay. Passed.
Okay, roll call vote on two, please.
Favorable action on number two?
All in favor? Read two, please.
Number two, favorable action. Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio. Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezey.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Appolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
No.
Counsel, President Delasola.
Yes.
10 yeas, one nay. You've passed.
Favorable action number three?
Seconded. Roll call vote?
On item number three, favorable action. Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio. Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezey.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin. Counsel Appolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
No.
President Delasola.
Yes.
10 yeas, one nay. You've passed.
Favorable action number four?
Roll call on four, please.
Item number four for favorable action. Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio. Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezey.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Appolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
No.
President Delasola.
Yes.
10 yeas, one nay. You have passed.
Favorable action number five?
Roll call vote, please.
For favorable action on item number five, Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezey.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Appolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
No.
President Delasola.
Yes.
10 yeas, one nay. You have passed.
Counsel Capone?
Mr. President, could we take, spend rolls and take items 6, 7, and 8 collectively?
All in favor? Ayes have it. Take 6, 7, and 8 collectively.
Item number six, Mr. President, National Grid desires to construct a gas main line on Second Street, Spring Street to Boston Street. Item number seven, National Grid desires to construct a gas main line on Spring Street, Terminal Street, and River Beach Parkway. And item number eight, Mr. President, is National Grid desires to construct a bare steel main, bare steel main on Willis Ave, Main Street to Bell Rock Street.
I got Counsel McGlaughlin and Counsel Capone.
Mr. President, do we have anybody here on behalf of these three items, on behalf of National Grid?
Just state your name and the company, please.
Andrew Joseph, National Grid.
Mr. Joseph, good evening. Nice to see you. Could you just give an overview briefly of what you want to do with these three items?
Actually, these three items were previously done with the approval of the city because of the casino opening. They were paving Second Street and Spring Street for the opening, so we ended up pushing the schedule forward and ended up replacing the old main prior to the casino opening. And they ended up paving Second Street right now, previously. So Second Street is already paved, Spring Street is already done prior to the opening.
Okay. So, Mr. Joseph, so this work has already been completed?
Yes.
That's on here?
Yes. So we ended up doing that as a formality to go through the process.
That's good to know, because I was thinking Counsel Matuski and many members have talked about how good Second Street looks being paved, and I was thinking, oh, boy, we're going to have to rip up Second Street to do this work. It's going to be a nightmare. But to know that it's already done after paving, now paving is completed, that makes it much better to know. So my question was going to be about the recutting of the street, because we've seen numerous times that streets done over, Prescott Street, for example, was done over, and then we had to go back and make trenches across Prescott Street for several occasions, and so I was going to talk on that, but that answers my questions.
Yeah, we ended up pushing that forward just because of the opening, so we ended up pushing that job forward.
So, so tonight, we're approving something that has already been, so it's just sort of a formality that these are before us tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Counsel Capone, and then Counsel Appolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guests. So six and seven are done?
Six and seven are done.
So we don't need to spend a lot of time on those?
No.
All right, so...
Actually, eight is, it is also done.
Eight is also done?
With the approval of the city, the, that one was a reinforcement because of the pressure. We ended up increasing the size of the main on that street. But because of MWRA on that street, it took a large portion of that street. We ended up putting the main in the sidewalk.
Okay.
So because of putting it in the sidewalk, we had, again, as a formality, it was already preapproved by the city to do it, and we ended up replacing it, and the sidewalk's already replaced. Everything is back 100%.
All right, so a bare steel main. What exactly is that?
It's just a steel, yeah, it's just a steel pipe, 8-inch. It's, it was done back in the 60s, so there's possibilities of it rotting out. So we ended up replacing it with a bigger pipe with more volume to reinforce our system.
Okay. And this question may not be to you, it may be to our city solicitor. So if the work's already done and you're coming up, it's probably just a formality to dot the i's and cross the t's?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I don't have any other questions.
We have no more questions for our guests? I'll say it, councillor. Thank you very much.
Second motion.
I'm going to open a public hearing for number 6, 7, and 8. I'll start with 6. Anybody? Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor on number 6? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed on 6? Third time, anybody opposed? 6 is closed. Number 7 on the agenda? Anybody in favor? Second time, anybody in favor? Third time, anybody in favor? That portion's closed. Anybody opposed on 7? Anybody opposed? Third time, anybody opposed? 7 is closed. I'll go to 8 on the agenda. Anybody in favor of 8? Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor? Anybody opposed on 8? Anybody opposed? Third time, anybody opposed? That portion is closed. Thank you very much. The man is before you, councillor.
Quick question. I see our Assistant City Solicitor, I don't know if the City Solicitor is present, but if either one of them could come forward, I appreciate it.
Just state your name and your department, please.
Good evening, Keith Slattery, Assistant City Solicitor.
Council Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to our guest. Thank you very much. You heard the petition to say the work's already been done?
Yep.
And I think it's probably just a matter of housekeeping and making sure everything's complied with. But could you give us your take as the city's attorney? What we're doing, are we exposing the city any liability by doing this, not doing this, et cetera?
It's really a formality, and it wouldn't really have anything to do with liability. It's really just closing a contractual loop. So, once that's done, the whole matter's complete, and it can be put away, so.
Any questions for our guest? Thank you very much.
Sure.
Favorable action on item number six?
Rule call vote, please.
Favorable action on item number six. Council Capone.
Yes.
Council de Florio.
Yes.
Thank you.
Council de Perro.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Marchesi.
Yes.
Council Matuski. Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Apolitano.
Yes.
Council Simonelli.
Yes.
President Delasola.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have passed.
Favorable action, item number seven?
Rule call vote.
Can we take items seven and eight collectively?
They gotta be voted on separately.
They have to be voted on separately? I'll just, yeah, okay.
Rule call on seven, please.
For favorable action, Council Capone.
Yes.
Council de Florio. Council de Perro.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Marchesi.
Yes.
Council Matuski. Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Apolitano.
Yes.
Council Simonelli.
Yes.
President Delasola.
Yes.
Item eight, please.
Ten yeas, one absent, you have passed.
Favorable action on item number eight?
Second of motion. Rule call on eight, please.
Favorable action on item number eight. Council Capone.
Yes.
Council de Florio. Council de Perro.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Marchesi.
Yes.
Council Matuski.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Apolitano.
Yes.
Council Simonelli.
Yes.
President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, you have passed.
Open public participation?
Have a second on that? That seconded?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Mr. President, we have three people that have signed in for public participation. The first is Victoria. Looks like Cynicson, 193 Nichols Street.
Just state your name and address, just to let you know, we cannot respond to any comments that are here.
My name is Victoria Cynicson, 193 Nichols Street.
And we have, each guest has two minutes, just wanna clarify that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Regarding the short-term rentals, we encourage you to require the operator of a short-term rental to live at the premises 12 months a year. We are concerned that if they only need to reside there for nine months and can rent their unit as well on Airbnb, we will then have the entire two-family home operating as a hotel with no one at the premises monitoring if the renters have loud parties and disrupt the neighborhood. We are especially concerned since we share our driveway with this two-family at 191 Nichols Street. And regarding the zoning changes to short-term rentals, we encourage you to restrict them to commercial zones and not allow them in residential zones.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, the next person we have is Louis Milan, 191 Broadway Street. Talk about short-term rentals.
All right, can you hear me? Awesome. My name is Louis Milan. I do short-term rentals. I've been hosting people for the past few years. I have like 1,000-plus five-star reviews. I host people from, that come from all over the world and also inside the U.S. And we often have to deal with the rumor of the security things and stuff. But the worst thing I have had to deal with is just loud music and a little message, or just a message, can fix everything. I heard the story of my people here, and yes, there's often like a few hosts that don't know what they're doing, and they affect us. But, in any case, I think our activity is good for our city. We encourage, or we tell our guests to go to different places, and we support businesses around the casino area. This is the place where we are actually trying to do our business in order to contribute to our city to grow, then, so we can all develop. And, yeah, that's pretty much it. I think all the area around the casino should be like a place where we can host people and, you know, like contribute for the economy to grow. Thank you.
Just repeat that address again, please.
Say again?
Repeat the address.
191 Broadway Street. It's the.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, the last person on the public participation is Jessica Olivera, 2 Water Street, Danvers. Is Jessica here?
Second of close petition. Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
We suspend the rule and take item number 12.
Before you do that, if it's possible, I was requested if, we have a couple of quick appointments. There's two people in the audience, like I said, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, I will draw my motion, I just need to state right here, that's the reason why.
Which is items number nine and 10.
Suspend the rules and take items nine and 10, and suspend rule 20 as well.
Ayes have it, take nine and 10. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item number nine, Mr. President, is that Everett City Council hereby confirms the appointment of Cheyenne Rangel as a member of the Planning Board for a term of one year beginning 11/12/2019. And item number 10 is that the Everett City Council hereby approves the appointment of Ronald Cohen as a member of the Board of Assessors for a term of one year beginning 11/12/2019.
Did we suspend 20? I just wanna make sure.
Yes, we did.
Okay, good.
I got Council McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, I have just one question, a formality, but is there a residency requirement on any of these appointments?
I couldn't hear Councilor.
Is there a residency requirement on these appointments?
Council Capone?
I think under the administrative code that was passed, you either have to be a resident or own property in Everett.
Correct. You do. Everett resident, yes.
Either residency or own property.
Everett resident or own property in Everett.
Okay. Well, one of the individuals I know personally, which is Ron Cohen, and couldn't think of a better person, have as a former assessor himself in a local town, Abatsas, to be on our Board of Assessors, a great appointment, and I just wanted to ask on the residency. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Matuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know Mr. Cohen is here for his appointment. Is the young lady here, Cheyenne Rangel, a woman? Is she here?
I don't see her, no.
Mr. President, just as a formality, I'd like to know who's on the Planning Board, I don't know this party. I'd like to hold that one over until they take the time to join us in this chamber where we're swearing them in. How many times do we go to a Planning Board meeting or a Board of Appeals meeting? I'd like to know who the members are. Needless to say, on the appointment of Mr. Cohen, who I've known for many, many years, he just left the town of Saugus as the chief assessor in that community. The mayor has made a very good appointment here. This man is an expert in property assessing, and I think the mayor did a great job on this appointment. But I respectfully ask, I don't know the other party, this is not being insulting, but when you do get appointed, you're supposed to be up before the chamber here. So, with that, I'd like to lay item number nine on, postpone item number nine, and move for favorable action on item 10.
Second of motion on item number nine.
Number nine on the agenda. Okay, all in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it. To hold nine over.
All right.
It was already voted on. It's already voted, so that was number nine. Now, we're gonna go on number 10.
Yeah, favorable action on item number 10? He did a vote, he did a.
I just, it's a voice vote, I just did it. Yes. We did it. Okay, we'll go number 10. Seconded? Rule call vote on 10, please.
For favorable action on item number 10, the appointment of Mr. Cohen as a member of the Board of Assessors. Council Capone.
Yes.
Council de Florio.
Yes.
Council de Perro.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Marchesi.
Yes.
Council Matuski.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Apolitano.
Yes.
Council Simonelli.
Yes.
President Delasola.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have passed.
Congratulations.
Mr. Cohen, Mr. Cornelio will be in touch with you in terms of swearing you in. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion to take item number 12 off the calendar?
We have a signing sheet.
Have a motion, Council McGlaughlin, you want to take number 12, please?
We have, before that, we have a sign and sheet.
It's okay, I'm making a motion, suspend the rule and take item number 12 off the calendar.
Well, usually you go by what the sign and sheet is, I mean, that's up to you.
Seconded, take 12. Those in favor, take 12? Opposed, ayes have it.
Item number 12, Mr. President, is that the Everett City Council hereby supports the MBTA Fiscal Management Control Board's commuter rail vision.
Council McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, can we make a motion and we invite up our State Representative, Joseph McGonigal?
Seconded, all in favor? Ayes have it.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I actually revoke my motion and invite up Mayor D. Maria, I apologize, I thought it was rough. Make a motion and invite up Representative, Mayor D. Maria, sorry.
Seconded, all in favor, invite the mayor up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you like to read the piece first?
This thing was also emailed to you last week. If you'd like me, I can read the piece if it's.
I think just for the viewer and audience, so they can hear the piece and understand why we're here. If you can invite Tony Souzer and Representative, Jay Monte and Representative McGonigal up with me, I'd appreciate that, too, thank you.
All in favor? Ayes have it.
So, this comes from the Office of the Mayor. Dear Honorable Members attached, please find a resolution in support of the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority Fiscal Management Control Board's commuter rail vision. And it says, whereas the city of Everett has no rapid transit service, city of Everett aims to provide new affordable and market-rate housing throughout the city. The city of Everett is overburdened by excessive vehicle congestion, both from regional traffic patterns as well as local car-dependent development. The city of Everett aims to provide a high quality of life for residents no matter their income. The city of Everett seeks to improve all aspects of its public transportation, public transit system that will allow for better mobility for its existing residents as well as new capacity and mobility that will allow construction of new residential and commercial development that will improve the quality of life in the city of Everett without further burdening the road system or degrading the environment. The MBTA Fiscal Control Board voted on November 4th to endorse a transformation of the commuter rail system that would include frequent electric-powered train service to the cities of Everett, Chelsea, Lynn, and Revere. That this train service would provide trips every 15 minutes, including a new stop in the city of Everett, and be offered at a fare comparable with the rapid transit system. That this quality of service to the city of Everett would provide subway-like service to residents of the city of Everett and enable smart development in the Commercial Triangle District that is less dependent on private vehicles. The mayor and the city council of Everett offer their wholehearted support for the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority Fiscal Management Control Board's November 4th vote on commuter rail vision resolution. The resolution which states, the Fiscal Management Control Board directs the GM, who's the general manager of the MBTA, to immediately take steps to prepare for the implementation of Phase 1 of commuter rail transformation effort. While needed, service along corridors must be attended to, the MBTA shall first implement EMU-powered service along the Providence-Stoughton Line, the Fairmont Line, and the line from Boston to Everett to Chelsea to Revere to Lynn, the so-called environmental justice line. The Fairmont environmental justice lines shall be designated to deliver rapid transit headways at a fare levels akin to then fare structure of the rapid transit system.
Thank you. Mr. Megan. This is happening? I wanted to include you on at the beginning. I know you've heard about the expansion of the commuter rail stop. I just wanna let you know that the news is good, right? The general manager and the T, they're in favor of providing the city of Everett with a commuter rail stop. This is gonna get into the bond bill. It's already made, I believe it's already, the Fiscal Management Control Board has already petitioned to get that into bond bill, to expend those funds. This will allow the city of Everett, you're probably looking at a stop, a commuter rail stop, somewhere near the Bat yard. Route 16 and 99 intersect. We can, with having that stop, we really can rebuild the Commercial Triangle area of the city, provide T service for the entire community, actually, who will be using, and I'll get into the whole BRT system. But you'll be able to just take thousands and thousands of cars off the road, provide service to residents who live in the environmental justice area, like our residents do, who all, right now, as you know, have bus service that, and that bus service is questionable. 13,000 to 14,000 people ride the buses from Everett a day into Boston. So, I just wanted to, you know, and Jay can expand on this, and I know Representative McGonigal can expand on this, but this is huge that they took this vote for the city of Everett. This has been a lot of work on behalf, you know, the Town Station Department, Jay's been working on, and other mayors, like the mayor of Lynn, who's worked on this hard with us, McGee, soon as he became mayor the last few years, and the representative and our senator, that we're gonna get this stop. I mean, it's just gonna be transformational. This is where the civil line comes into play in our BRT lines. And that's gonna be something that we're gonna be, as you know, just recently, you may have read, that Marty Walsh has decided to put the Center Lane bus lanes on Rutherford Ave, connecting our bus lanes on Broadway, which is, is just a benefit. You have a one-seat ride from Glendale Square to North Station, which will turn around to Haymarket. The governor and the secretary and the lieutenant governor are in favor of the plan. We got a million-dollar grant from the Ba Foundation that we'll be able to hire ITDP, who's our consultant, and we'll be going to the, to Joe and Sal to get about 10 million in the bond bill to do the designs for this year. And, you know, which is, which we're all looking at, right? We've been talking about these housing developments that are in the city, and why are we doing the zero parking, right? So, this kinda ties into what we're doing, why we're doing the zero parking. You know, I would rather see, as you know, the vision here is for buildings to be built without cars, car-dependent, without parking spaces for them. Now, just the rapid bus line that we put in alone has saved, you know, numerous amounts of time on Broadway. But by getting to the point that we're getting, it really will transform what you see here in the city of Everett. If you're able to get on a bus out front of Broadway here, and it takes you directly to North Station, to Haymarket, that is having like a train station in your city. That gives people a reliable form of transportation, you know, as, whatever the T runs, the same hour the T runs, then you can provide the housing that you need to keep residents in here. The housing that you need to provide to reduce the cost of rents, because demand is so high and supply is so low. We cannot build for more parking. It is too congested in the city as it is now. We need to, like they did in Kendall Square in Cambridge, I think it was Kendall Square in Cambridge? Like, if you look at what they did in Kendall Square in Cambridge, I think 10 years ago, they put the same system in place. They actually, we'll be providing to you three ordinances coming soon. Parking ordinance, transportation demand management ordinance, and a transportation management association. What that does is when someone comes in and wants to build zero parking, they have to follow these ordinance requirements. It could be like you would have to provide MBTA buses for all your employees, pay into a bike-share system, pay into a car-share system. Or you'll be managed by a TDM, right? Shuttle services to and from your development, to the commuter rail stop, or to the bus lines, or to the T-stations. That is all coming before you in January. But I just wanted to just get your focus on this. I didn't have to bring this to you, this is already happening. The state has, you know, they've taken the vote, they're putting it in the bond bill, they're gonna be designing stops for the city of Everett. I just wanted to make you aware of it. I've seen a lot of you talk about better transportation for our residents, talk about better housing for our residents, more affordable housing for our residents, higher inclusionary zoning numbers. By providing, by giving a developer the ability to build dense housing and not have to build parking lots, which parking lots create so much water in our stormwater systems and terrible for our ecosystem, it's just bad news. It's not good. And so, I'm gonna provide you these three ordinances in January, just so you understand the direction we're moving in. Commuter rail stop is huge news. The center bus lines, I mean, the governor and the lieutenant, they're all for it. They wanna provide, you know, hopefully we'll get the money to provide that, that's the next step. And I wanna take some questions from you. I want Jay to come up. Jay, if you wanna, you know, talk a little bit about, Representative, if you wanna, definitely come up just to say a few words. And I'd like you to ask some questions about, you know, about transportation. and I'd like you to ask some questions about, you know, um, about transportation, about parking, about development, about, uh, you know, uh, this, what was happening in the city of Everett. You know, I just want to give an opportunity for you and also the residents to kind of see what we're doing, what we're working on.
Okay.
Rep, if you want to.
Just, and I'll be brief, I know you've got a, a long meeting ahead of you. But, believe me, it's a historic day in the city of Everett. Some of us remember when we had a T stop here. Now it's coming to fruition, it's here. It's incredible what we're trying to do with transportation. You know, once that, that station is here, you'll be able to go to the north, north of Boston. You'll come into North Station, uh, when they build the North-South Rail Link. You're gonna be able to go anywhere in the country. It, it's, it's gonna transform, especially Everett, but I can't say how much it's gonna transform the whole area. Um, the future is, the future is public transportation. And, and the governor's committed, we're committed, um, to spending billions, billions of dollars, um, to make this, uh, happen. And the bond bill that the mayor's talking about is, is roughly $18 billion. And reach out to us, reach out to the mayor, reach out to myself, if you have other ideas, to help us, because it's that big. It's bigger than all of us, believe me. Um, but, but it's an exciting time. And it's been happening for a while. The mayor, myself, the senator, we've been meeting, um, with the Fiscal Management Control Board at meetings. You don't hear about it in newspapers or on Facebook, but we, we've been there, fighting for this. Um, and, and I'm glad that we're, we're letting you know about it, to, especially to help me on the state level. So, um, I've got summaries of the bond bill, um, we can send them to you, um, so you can take a look at them, uh, look at it and see how extensive this, this is gonna be, especially for the city of Everett. So, um, so congratulations. It's, it's a great day for the city of Everett.
Jay, you want to just talk a little more detail?
Yeah, so, uh, with specific, you know, reference to the commuter rail ordinance, um, commuter rail's something we've had in the city for, you know, almost two centuries, and it's never been really an asset to the city. It's kind of been a cut-through facility. Um, this, this changes that, this really changes that into an amenity that will allow us to, to grow, as the mayor said, um, allow us to provide the affordable housing. Um, one of the biggest costs to providing housing is parking. A single parking space goes for upwards of $50,000. So, trying to provide an affordable unit, two-bedroom unit, that requires two parking spaces, you're already at $100,000 just on the parking. So, add to that, then the rest of the unit, um, it's very hard to create a, an affordable housing unit, you know, when you're trying to produce that amount of housing. But this is the way that the Boston region's going, this is the way that, um, many other metro regions are going. Urban areas that have tried to be, remain car-dependent are simply not competitive, they cannot provide the services and the quality of life that, um, you know, places around the world, in Europe and other, you know, countries, even here in the United States, um, you know, cities are, are built for people, and we need to remember that as we plan, that when we bring in a new developer, when we bring in a new project, um, that we plan for the people in that project, not for the vehicles that, you know, may come with it. So, um, it, it's a different way of thinking about it. Um, we think about it in terms of mobility rather than traffic congestion. Mobility is a, is someone's ability to leave their house and get to their job, get to their school, um, do the things they need to do. It doesn't matter how they got there, but it matters that they were able to do so quickly and efficiently. And when you put it in that type of terms, then you can look and say, you know, so there's gonna be some parts of town that are, are gonna be auto-dependent for a while longer, but, um, you know, on our major development quarters, Broadway, Commercial Triangle, we have this opportunity now to rethink, um, how mobility will work in those places and attract the type of people who are, are willing to, um, live that lifestyle, so.
Yeah, I mean, you, you're looking to build housing for people who won't need, you know, uh, but need cars, or housing that is, is, you know, is, you know, 500 square feet big. Um, or, you know, there are people in our city right now living in, in rooms, whole families living in rooms today, and two families and three families, because the rents are so high. They rent un cuadro, it's, it's a room. That's what's happening in the city. Some of yous have dealt with it, some of you, some of you have dealt with it. But we need to, we need to provide more housing. To provide more housing, you need to provide a better transportation system. A better transportation system means, um, something other than car, and a one-seat ride into Boston. Uh, the news of the commuter rail stop is huge, right? Um, the, the, the bigger news is the BRT, is the Center Lane BRT. And for parking on Broadway, if you live on Broadway, you say, "Well, you know, the road's only 40, 40 feet, 44 feet long, right? The two, two bus lanes in the middle, you're 24 feet." So the two other driving lanes are now, uh, another 10 feet, right? So, no parking, what are we gonna do? Well, you have parking lots throughout the city like, um, that sit empty after 4:00 PM at night, all night until the morning. You have places where you can build municipal parking garages, or expand parking. So if you're saying from the Rotary, from Sweets to Fred Capone's home, I believe it's 24 spaces on the right-hand side. You're gonna make up 24 spaces there, right? So, but that is, from the Rotary to the light there, could be in traffic, in a car, 15, 20 minutes. But in the bus that's going by, that 20 minutes is gone. So now, the homes along Broadway, you can look at changing the zoning and building more dense housing with the retail on the first floor, and you get smaller units, you can do a little bigger, right? But they don't need cars, they have a train basically out front of their home, bringing them back and forth to Boston. They can rent cars on weekends, there, there, there are things like, uh, the car sharing, bike sharing, um, Ubers and Lifts, of course. There's a direct, a different direction we need to move in. This is a direction we need to move in for our main areas. Like Jay said, our residential neighborhoods, like where, where, uh, I live in Abidav, I mean, eventually, Fabri- Elm Street could have some sort of, something that takes you to, into the square and up, up 99. But I just wanted to share the news of the commuter rail stop, which is, which is great news for the city of Everett. That, you know, we're gonna actually, gonna get a, a stop i- in our city. But the biggest stuff is really that, is that BRT stuff, the Center Lane BRT, that, uh, the mayor of Boston has now, in his Rutherford Ave design, has designed trees in that 24-foot corridor. But as soon as the T says they're giving us the money to operate the buses, and that's been the, the, the whole work, the work with the secretary and the fiscal control boards and the governor, is to give us the operating, operating dollars to put that in place. And then the city, now you have Cities of Marl and Gary Christensen putting a transportation planner in his office coming this January to work with us to expand the bus line up 99. My goal is to get to the end of the Marlville line. My real goal is to get up Route 1 and as far north as possible, but stops all along, getting major traffic off the roads. Secretary loves it, the governor loves it, we, we got, the key was city of Boston, we got the city of Boston. Um, so, when we do in a zero, I just wanted to touch on, on the zero parking. When we, when we do it, we, we, at the zoning board, I know they've been talking about no parking permits, right? There's, there's a, you, you need to make, we need to make sure, I think our next step is to put in, make sure that the property owner who gets permitted has to put in his deeds, her, her deeds, that there is no parking for this unit. No sticker, you're not gonna park on the streets. So you can't come there with a car, you'll have nowhere to put it. And I believe we're gonna go to seven-day-a-week overnight parking, is that the, that what we've all been talking about? Is doing seven-day-a-week enforcement? So we'll cover our weekends. So, it's kind of like a holistic approach of, of governing, right? So, to get more affordable housing, you gotta build more units. To get a developer to want to build more units, you gotta give them help on, him or her, I'm sorry, on parking. To, to build all this and generate more taxes, to up, you know, to help your city, you need a good public transportation system, which also helps taking, you know, gases off your streets, congestion off your streets, uh, in, 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 in not creating all these huge parking lots that we see, because every time someone has to build a three-family, or renovate, a renovated two or a three, they're gonna put six parking spaces in their backyard. When it come to you in January, when that ordinance is done, we're changing that ordinance, ordinance. So, my goal is, as long as they're not increasing the size of that property, and it's a two-family now, it's a one-family, and you allow them, give them five units, as long as they're not increasing the size of that property, putting additions on and changing the FAR, they don't change that, you reduce the size, because now they're living in rooms anyways. Now you create a household, you create, you create not only just a room, but you're giving them a bathroom, a kitchen, a, a whole facility. It's a whole, if you've got three hours, I'll give you some more that we're, that we're working on. But I just wanted to come to you because there's some misinformation going on regarding, uh, the housing, the building, the transportation stuff, and I just want to let you know that the players in Boston have agreed with the city of Everett, that we're gonna put in the, in, in the transportation bond bill, the monies to build you a stop. You know, we're gonna get the monies for the design of the BRT, complete documents, in the, in the bond bill, you know? So, um, if you want to talk more about it, and Jay, Jay really didn't do his, he was, I, I think he was a little gun-shy here, a little nervous, because it is intimidating to come here, as you know, to come up and speak about, um, uh, just different things that we're working on. But I, I would, I would implore you to each have a conversation with Tony and Jay, and myself, the three of us. I would love to host you guys in smaller settings, uh, and talk about the plan, and the new city councils especially too, just to talk about the transportation plan, the housing production plan, how it fits in, how it reduces congestion, how it's good for your environment, how it's good for every, how it's good for the growth of the economy in, in, in the city of Everett, and how you make housing also safer, making units safer. But, uh, I, I hope, you know, you, you don't have to support it, it's just a resolution that I just wanted to send, take an opportunity to come up here before you, it's already happening. There was part of our, as you know, one of our initial plans that we did way back four, five years ago, is the Everett Transit Study that we did, that was commissioned by the T. Uh, I think some of you have met them at the Conley Center and talked about, that's been about, uh, three years, four years now? Uh, so it's, it's a process, right? So you're, we're, we're really, uh, in the last few years have gained a lot of momentum, uh, with the state and, um, and our, and our colleagues in the Senate and the House, and, and other, other mayors that are abutting us, actually looking to us as leaders in, in this, uh, in this pursuit of better transportation, better equality in transportation, really. Because we're, you know, we are the poorer people around here, and we're, we're the, we're the ones that are sitting in buses all day, you know, uh, or at least our people that we know, residents that we know going to work every day are sitting in buses. While they're sitting behind a person in one car, you have 100 people on a bus. It's not fair. People don't want to use a bus because it's 100 people on a bus and they're sitting behind a car. So you provide that better bus service, they'll use the bus and not their car. Better for the environment, better for everything, so, um, I'll take...
I do have a few questions.
Yeah, any questions, because you know me, I go on all day.
All right, Council McLaughlin, then Council McKinnon.
Mr. President, Mr. President, I, uh, I'm really pleased to hear the information that was shared tonight. We haven't heard a lot about it over the last few years since the, probably the Conley Center meetings that were being had. So, it's good to hear, uh, the updates of what is going on in transportation. And I think the mayor is right, the more affordable housing, we can build a better city, we're gonna have. But we need to be careful of how we measure success in our community, and how we make sure that our long-term residents are able to stay in the city of Everett. I think that's really important. My question to Representative Agonago is the bond bill. Can he just touch, and I think he said he might have a summary that he can maybe email to us or something to that effect, but what the bond bill looks like as far as timeframe of being able to get something like that passed, Representative Agonago? I know Mayor D. Maria alluded to a $10 million, uh, number coming from the state, but is that $10 million shared throughout communities or just for Everett?
No, no, it won't be, because it's, it's an $18 billion.
Okay.
$18 billion dollar bond bill, uh, probably one of the most progressive, uh, that has ever been done in the Commonwealth. The governor's on board, and it's going through the process.
And how long will that...
But, but it, it will, it will come up for a vote this session, okay? Because it's that important. Because it's not only, the biggest part for us is the rail system in it. Is everything, i- i- is, is the, the billions of dollars that they're putting in to the MBTA, um, to, to all commuter rail, uh, stations. That, that's, that's one part of it. But we've got to, we've got to redo the, the bridges in our community. That funding, um, is gone now. I think there may be $200 million left in that funding, when they did the bridge repair bond bill. You know, some five, six, no, it was before my time, probably about eight years ago, I wasn't, that wasn't a vote I made. So, those bridges are all done, but there's still hundreds of other bridges, so that, that's a big part of it. Um, road construction's a big part of it. And, and I gotta tell you this, as vice chairman of housing, that, that's, and I'm on the transportation committee, but it's, it's a wraparound effect. We have to build more housing, whether people like it or not, we really do. Us baby boomers, we're, we're coming, we're, we're the fastest-growing population looking for, um, elderly housing.
If I, if I can, just, so, the fiscal, the, the, the resolution states now in the, um, with the, um, in the state, that the FMCB, the Fiscal Management Control Board directs the GM, the GM sits on the board, to, to immediately take steps to prepare for implementation for Phase 1 of the commuter rail. So you can see what Phase 1 is. It, it basically spells out transformation effort, uh, uh, Phase 1 of the transformation effort. "While needed, service along all corridors must be attended to, the MBTA shall first implement EMU-powered service along Providence-Stoughton, the Our Line, the EJ, EJ Line, and the, um, Fairmont Line." So that is...
It's coming.
It, that means that go out and build it, you know? So, um, that's gonna be a, that money will be reduced out of the, the bond bill. The $1.9 billion, this will be a project that goes out for, you know, for, uh, for bid, for work, you know? And I want, I also, Senator was called, but he's at an event down in Natchez for the, um, neighborhood developers who are doing the St. Teresa's project, which was very instrumental in getting done, so that's why he's not here. But, you know, if you wanted to talk to him about the process too, uh, but this is, you know, for that language to be, be spoken by the Fiscal Management Control Board directing the GM to, you know, basically fund it, do it. Project, you know, they know, uh, you know, the particulars or amounts, they have an estimate of what it costs, but they will go out to study the stops, implement the stops, build the stops.
Mayor, I just wanted to, uh, to say, I think it's fantastic, and I hope that you will, uh, invite us into small group sessions so that we can talk more about this, because I, I would support your resolution. I wish I knew more about the real focus of it so that I understand what we're actually supporting, but it sounds great on surface.
And it just happened, that vote just...
Yeah, that just, that just happened, uh, like last week. So, you know, I, I don't really need a vote, but if you want us to send a letter in support to, we'll send it to the representative, our senator, we'll send it to the governor, we'll send it to the Fiscal Management Control Board showing that the, the city leaders wanted them to spend those dollars to build that. It's just a show, like, I just, basically, another check in the checkbooks, right?
And I think it's tremendous, but I just hope that you will, uh, invite us for more focus.
I will do that, yeah, I will definitely do that.
Stronger competition, love, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council McKinnon, Council McHazy, then Council Paul Tyner.
Through you, Mr. President, to, let me see, I'll start with Representative first.
Take it easy on the representative.
No, no, no. I love you.
Go ahead.
All right, listen.
Go ahead, Counselor.
What it is, is, all right, so, the, the vote was taken, this money was approved for this project, and how much was it?
No, so the vote, the vote was, um...
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you explain that again, just for...
Yeah, you know what, you, you can do a better job explaining it, Jay, you want to explain it, uh, to the council, how it...
Step on up, yes.
I just tried to do it once, though, Mike, I don't know if you got it, so I'm gonna let him try it.
So, the, the effort started as the state wanted to revision the whole commuter rail system. You know, what can they do with it to make it operate more efficiently, quicker, faster, all that? Um, and they did a whole report, they came back with several options, they brought that to the Fiscal Control Board, and the, and the Control Board said, um, "Great, um, we're gonna direct you to go and, and make these improvements." So that, that was the vote, the vote was, we, we...
Okay.
Took into your account your recommendations, and we're directing you to do it, to do this.
So it's sort of like the beginning...
The very beginning.
Process of everything happening.
That's how you directed me to spend money on a product in the CIP account.
Yeah, right.
Okay. And the bond bill created by the governor is where this money's gonna be.
And how much is it, again?
Like $1.9 billion. Eighteen, eighteen billion, eighteen billion.
Eighteen billion.
Eighteen billion.
So how is the vote actually, I mean, once that vote is gonna go down, how is it looking?
Counselor, it, it has not come to a vote just yet.
Okay.
Okay, the process is, um, it was a hearing at the Transportation Committee on it, the governor presented it with his team, okay? Now the process starts where it comes to us, um, and it'll go to the Senate. And every one of us has the opportunity to amend that $18 billion.
Sure.
If you, if you look at the summary, that's the easiest way I can, because you'll see $300 million, um, to, uh, restructure MBTA stations.
Yeah.
Just, just in our area.
And they need it, they need it.
So, so you're gonna have representatives in, in senators pushing for part of that 300 million.
Okay, so everybody's pretty much on board if they're in that area, correct?
Correct, but, but it affects all of the Commonwealth.
And you need the Fiscal Management Control Board...
Sure.
To, to, to go forward and do the project?
Yeah.
Before you...
Gotcha, all right. Let me see here, holistically, I like that, when you said, you're gonna take a holistic...
Yeah, well, government is, is a holistic approach to government.
On it, uh, was there also like a impact study on this community and surrounding communities? Of what this will do if in fact there is a railway stop that's gonna be coming in?
Yep.
I know that we talked before, myself and you, there was supposed to be Silver Line, I think, we were... I think we were-
That's the part, Silver Line, Silver Line will, would run with this commuter rail stop, so you look at that, Silver Line, commuter rails, and BRT could all stop at the same stop.
So, and then they'll, they'll-
And the Silver Line, uh, Jay, you wanna talk about the progress in Silver Line and Summerville and the Gaming Commission?
Yeah, so separately from this, uh, the state is moving forward with a million-dollar conceptual design of the Silver Line extension from Chelsea to Sullivan Square, uh, we were also successful in getting, uh, $450,000 from the Gaming Commission to assist in that effort, uh, so that's gonna start this winter, um, the state's putting out, putting that project to bid, I think in January, uh, so from January probably through the following, through, through 2020 and into 2021, um, they'll be doing that, that conceptual design work, um, it's also-
They don't just hand you 1.5 million for it yet.
Yeah, they're not gonna. Um, so, we, going through that process, we'll figure out, you know, exactly where the bus is gonna go, is it gonna continue to follow the commuter rail tracks, is it gonna use city streets someplace, how's, how's it all gonna work, um, but we'll have answers to that hopefully, you know, eight to 12 months from now.
All right, and so, will there be an impact study?
Uh, yeah, and-
Maybe that's, maybe I should direct that towards the representative reason, isn't-
No, I don't think the rep would be voting on that study.
I can answer that.
Yeah, you can answer that.
Yeah, but, but I would think that, that absolutely there will be.
Um, when we did the transit plan several years ago, uh, there was an impact study looking at if the Silver Line were to come through Everett, and also went to the Lower Mystic Working Group a couple of years ago with Summerville, Boston, Encore, because you know how to see it at that, as well as Mastaut, um, I believe the numbers for the Silver Line were somewhere in the 5,000 to 10,000 range for ridership, new ridership.
Is there any way you can get us that study?
I can get, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And give it to every member here, actually?
Then you can run bus lanes on Second Street-
Sure.
To the Silver Line stop in Chelsea, if, if you've used that as a stop, and, and look at Park Street building some sort of parking garage, that even too.
Well, that's, we were talking about that before.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, it's just part of it, but a little bit bigger, because now you're gonna have the rail system coming in, so-
So, I think part of the goal of this too is-
Which, you know, I, I think it's a good thing, but what we need to see too, and you probably don't need our, our support or our vote on this, anyway, you're just coming to tell us it's happening, it's gonna happen, that's fine.
I'm trying, I'm trying to improve my communication skills.
Oh, yeah, you're doing well, Mr. Mayor, you're doing well.
Thank you.
So, um, but if we could get that old impact study, and then if we can get a new impact study in conjunction with whatever they're gonna be passing at the State House, I think it would be feasible for all the, you know, the fathers and the sisters of the city to actually take a look at that as well.
So-
And we should be on board, Mr. Mayor, with everything that's going on with this, because it's a big intake of what we're gonna be doing here in the city, so, um, although it is happening, we need to be informed about this, is there any way we can actually make a committee out of this, or we can actually do something on a monthly basis to where we can be brought up to speed as well?
You, you can, you can form a transportation committee if you'd like, and have court, like a quarterly meeting, or, or, I mean, a monthly meeting?
Yeah, that, I mean, that just makes sense so that we can actually be informed, and then they can come back and do a presentation.
We can, we can give you a monthly update.
Quarterly, or even quarterly, I mean, it's gonna be taking some time, I would think so, it's a big project, um, housing affordability too, um, with that.
Right.
So now, the plan that we're looking at now is going to what, studios?
You can do all type-
Affordable studios?
Once, once you, once you, uh, realistically, when you go, goes in twos and threes, there are usually families that probably are dependent on a vehicle, right, so right now, if you were to just do, like, as you see a lot of the developments now coming with singles or ones or studios, uh, those normally would be a, a senior citizen, or it could be just a, you know, a married couple, a single person, uh, could have a child, two, you know, one child or something, um, that, it's in demand, so isn't twos and threes are in demand, um, they're cheaper to rent, uh, some people would put a family in a, in a studio, you know, um, but they have, they'll have no parking, you know, and they'll have to, right, right now they'll have to use the public transportation system as their way, or they'll have to use car sharing, I mean, you know, you can rent a car right now if you want, there's like six of them in Everett right now, if you have to download the app, I actually, uh, my dry clean, yeah, and you, you know what I mean, there's so many different technologies out there, uh, but that's the type of people you're gonna be generating to come into your cities, those types of people, right?
Now, would, and getting back to the impact study, if you can put the impact of our schools in that study as well, because we're going to see that as well.
Every time you put a two or a three-bedroom unit, you're gonna see something, if you do a one or a studio, you really won't see any.
You never know, everybody's a lot closer, you don't know.
Very hot, very, very rarely, I mean, we, we could do that, we could do that now with the amount of apartment buildings, now how many, how many children we have coming out of these units, like the Bat Yard, I believe it's like under five, Pioneer, I don't believe there's any in there right now, so I, you know, or very, very few, I, you know what, why don't I just pull that data for you?
Yeah.
Those two buildings.
That's why I'm asking, I just think that everyone here should have a little bit of a, at least an opinion on what's going on there, because we're gonna be the ones that have to hear it, not me, these gentlemen and ladies that are up here now, they will have to hear it.
Yeah.
So, um, I think that it would, if everybody's on the same page and everybody knows what's going on, uh-
We have a lot of housing stock that is good for families now, especially where we have about like 8,000 kids in the school system.
Yeah.
I would say we have a lot of family housing, so, not to say the administration is moving away from family housing, but we're, we're moving more in, in the direction of low-density housing, small amount of people in a unit housing.
One child, two child.
Maybe no child, I don't know, I'm just saying, they're small units, people need affordable rents, there are a lot of people struggling working, you know, or seniors or whatever, that just have one person, they're struggling living, so, um, by providing that type of housing, you're actually keeping kids who are graduating or live in the city, or someone who's just become single, uh, ability to stay here, a senior will become single.
And they'll be able to get the bus, if they have to.
And then once you change, don't, you know, you, once you, once you get the, the, the whole, I, I see Council McCasey growing, uh, as I am, so I wanted to wrap it up, yeah, yeah, well, he's asking every question he can get in before the year's over, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I only got a couple more.
Only a couple more meetings, so you wanna get it all in.
So, I'm good, I'll just, I, I look forward to getting the stats, and the, if we can-
The impact, uh, the impact on the school, that, that could be a little, uh-
Well, schools and committee, I mean, I mean, community, because you're saying holistically we have to take a look at that, we're gonna do it, uh, we're gonna look at the housing-
Whatever, whatever studies we can get, or, or that come with the, uh, I mean-
Quite a bit, I think one of the goals too is over the next few months, we actually wanna come to you with some of the reports that we've done over the last year.
Yeah, the past, and what we can get in the present.
Right, so, we can update you with what we have, because I think you've not, you haven't seen all of that, and then we can move forward from that point, and if you would like to see certain, you know, more detail in one area, we can go back and do that, so.
Thank you.
All set, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mike McCasey.
And, and can we get an impact thing of the amount of ants will be displaced in the city of Everett? Uh, just two things, and congratulations to both you and the state rep-
Only around your house, Mike.
You and the state, state rep and now the senator, just a quick question, I, I just think that your rapid bus line will suffer the same fate as a train stop if you put in Bat Yard, there's no parking there, uh, the rapid, um, uh, bus line that you wanna put up to 99, whatever, if you had a couple of parking spots where people can park up there, I think it'd be very successful, it'll take cars out of coming to Lower Broadway and 99, I think, is Bat Yard gonna provide parking for people?
So, you're saying the, the commuter rail stop, we have to have it a mile away from the last stop in Chelsea, so, um, you, you know, we would have to, of course, work with transportation planners and architects, engineers, but you, you're gonna have to, um, build some sort of parking maybe there, or, you know, you really don't-
Why don't you get on the Second Street, there's all the property in the world there, you can just change the zoning there.
Yeah, yeah.
You put a thousand cars down there.
Yeah, you can, you can, but once you build more parking rides like that, you will also drive traffic to stop there, so if we put the system in Everett, the stop in Everett, you'll get, this is, this also busts the bike path that terminates at West Street right now, where finally designed the rest of that bike path, that will bring you right to the stop, um-
So, they're gonna jump, ride their bike there and you're on the bus?
So, you can walk there, ride your bike, you could look at doing shuttles on the bike paths in the colder months.
They got rid of the bus line, kept the trains, there wouldn't be any transportation problem.
So, you know, when you, when you put the center, when you put the center lane, bus lanes in-
But where's, where's the parking for the Bat Yard, you're still bringing all the people down?
13,000 people get on the bus today in Everett.
Yeah.
They get on it by walking to the bus stop.
Okay.
You're gonna provide a better bus service for them, now you're, now, now not only you're attracted to the 13,000 people that are riding the bus every day, you're gonna attract it to the other people who live on Elsie Street that take their car, but they can now walk to Glen Neal Square, but you'll walk, people will walk two mi, uh, two minutes, five minutes, eight minutes, to get a one-seat ride to Boston, we're providing a one-seat ride to Boston.
Oh, I understand, that's great, to go to Haymarket, I think it's great.
We're building a system for our residents.
Yeah.
Other communities that wanna build on it, they could build on it for their residents.
But we're not, I'm just saying, you don't think you need more parking to take advantages of the new, of the, of the new bus, uh, new train station?
So, so, you can provide parking for spaces you lose for the businesses on Broadway, or residents that live on Broadway, that now will have an issue with parking, by creating more parking garages, let's say, um, for new people to come in to use our system, you're gonna generate more tran, traffic.
Exactly, where are we gonna put the parking garage?
What you don't want, what you don't wanna do, right, you don't wanna generate all this trap, people coming from Malden now to park on Broadway Everett to get on the system, you want them to build their system also, so I'm providing a system for our residents.
Yeah, but the Bat Yard, will it have parking, that's all I'm saying.
It'll just be a formal stop so you can, that, that's only for the, that's only for the purple line, not for the BRT lane that's going down 99 all the way over to the Alpha Street Bridge into Childstown, it'll, it'll, it'll stop there and let people off if they wanna get on the purple line and take the rest in with the purple line in, but we're not looking for people to drive there and park there.
No, they said, I'm 100%, don't get me wrong, I'm just trying to-
But your point, you can do some sort of parking, let's say, on Second Street, like you said, at that stop-
I mean, you have acres of land there, you're redeveloping that area.
Right, so, on that Second Street, you can provide bus lanes there that drive you to that station if you want, that, it, you know, you're taking everybody that are on, from the check cashing place, all the way, the commercial triangle is the same size as Assembly Row.
Yeah.
Same exact size, you could fit Assembly Row in the commercial triangle, that's the vision for the commercial triangle, so you can put, you can, you can use the Chelsea stop, you can use bus lanes to the Chelsea stop, those people, you know, um, could, could get to the stop in Everett, um, too, also, you know what I mean, so they-
Don't get me, I'm on board 100%, I'm just offering a different suggestion, I just thought, you know, if you have this rapid bus, it is someplace up by, uh, Lowes, there's a parking lot where people get on a bus there, it doesn't bring the cars in.
That could, so, that could be a stop for like, you know, if Sargus wanted to put one in, that could be a stop, like, these, these look like actually train stations, so they, you actually walk into them, it, it's heated, it's air-conditioned, you buy a ticket.
You could do that right in Everett Square with adequate parking and do, um, you put 300 parking spots in Everett Square, you could just do the same thing right there, but, you know, like you said, it's exciting, it's, it's good, second thing is, I, I don't agree with the, the building, I, I would, you know, you know, with the, um-
Zero parking?
The zero parking, I, I think one, one would be adequate, and if you're gonna put retail in it, you're not really going to, uh, have people be successful if there's no parking, underneath or on the street, just to my, my opinion, I don't know what they get, 250, 300 dollars a square foot, uh, leased now, and, you know, triple net, there's a lot of money, water bills, it's a lot of money for a small business person to, uh, do, I mean, maybe in Cambridge they get the prices, I don't know if in Everett's there yet.
I think one way to look at this is that, there's a difference between not requiring somebody to build two spaces and then prohibiting them from building spaces, so, um, right now we require somebody to build two spaces, um, most likely we would go to is encouraging but not requiring them to build, you know, somewhere between one and, and zero, right?
How many square feet would you think these apartments would have, how many square feet are ones at the Pollin right now?
At the Pollin?
The one, the new ones we're putting in next door to Pollin where there's no parking, how big are they? 1,200 square feet?
I think they're smaller than that, I think it's 600.
The 18 units we're putting in, how big are they?
Con School, oh, it's still Con School.
But I guess what I'm going with this is that, rather than put-
Who was the question?
How big are the, you know-
How big, uh, the square footage of the, uh, the new ones we're putting up on, on Broadway?
Do you know, you know, then, yeah.
680 square feet, 680 square feet, oh, 600 to 800, right? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a good size unit, it's not a studio.
So, I, I think we're, we're trying to put the risk on the developer, so, if, if we, if we take away the-
Right, uh, you know, 600, you know, 600 square foot units normally will get you a one, you know, I don't, you gotta, I gotta take you into the Stan Tech that did the, um, uh, development in the Seaport, they did these, um, micro-units, that you walk in, bathroom, row, row kitchen, uh, bedroom, that's a Murphy bed, it comes down and up, and then like a small living with a little balcony, it's probably about 500 or 600 square feet, and, um, that, you know, is kinda what we're looking to allow, and, and when you say, you know, doing the two parking spaces per unit, is this antiquated zoning, all you're do-
Well, see, well, one-
All you're doing is allowing more cars to come into the city, so what happened for years, right, people would convert their singles into threes or twos into threes, they rip up their whole backyard, and they created six parking spaces, and they got the permits to build the, you know, the units, um, we should, we should have allowed it to be a permeable surface in rain gardens and, and gardens back there, and allow them just to reduce the size of the units they were building, right?
Are we going to have rain gardens though when these buildings are, are they gonna have asphalt?
No, you, you wanna, you wanna encourage-
Well, we want it, but it's just gonna keep you quiet.
Good landscaping, a good landscaping plan on these developments, and that's where the planning board has to come up and say, you know what, I wanna see lots of grass and lots of landscaping, and not hot top surfaces, uh, you know, um-
Less Cambridge turned out to be, there, there, every Summerville that's old, that's the problem, that's why I hate to see it happen here.
So, what do you, what do you, hate to see, what, would say, and, you know, I'd love to continue this conversation if we could, really, i- i- if we, if we, if we can really have this conversation in, in a, in a committee setting, um, on TV, I'd love to have it more in-depth with you, because, because we're working on these ordinances, we're, in, in, and, you know, some of you won't be here, uh, you know, unfortunately, but I hope you still stay involved in the process, but with the new council, I'd like to get them on board, Gurley, Gurley, Stephanie, and Jimmy, uh, you know, Jimmy's in the real estate business, Gurley talks, Gurley talks about affordable housing, providing more affordable housing, um, these, to, you know, and I, I believe Stephanie was all, all for that, better transportation and better housing for residents and stuff, so, I'd like them at the table, but if you wanna do it in committee meeting, refer this to it.
I, I won't dwell on this, I'm gonna have to, you know, speak, I'm not, you know, I mean, so I, I just wanted, you know, to share my piece, and I, and I just wanna-
Yeah, but I, I want, I want you to, to, go ahead, I, you talk.
And, you know, you know, the more, the more population we have, the bigger city we can come, the bigger city we become, the big city-
We need to embrace that we're a city, we need to embrace that we're a city.
Yeah, we are a city, but, you know, a lot of us, like myself, and maybe I'm old-fashioned, I, I like the small city, uh, living, that's me, I'm old.
Well, you know, in, in, I liked, I, I always liked to have, live in a small city too, but for some reason, we have well over, I would say, 60,000 residents live in the city, maybe more, you know, Census says we're getting close to 50, but I would say we're at 70, we're about, I, I would say that, just because amount of registered cars, amount we're about, I, I, I would say that, just because amount of registered cars, amount of kids going to school and stuff. We need to provide housing to eliminate some of the overcrowding in properties. And by producing housing, you're going to draw down some rent prices. It's almost like putting rent control in place, you know, without putting rent control in place. It's, it, it, it's supply and demand, and that's what we need to do, is, is create, the demand is high and the supply is low. Um, but you do it without the expense of, of congestion, and you do that with a good transportation system. And that's what we're doing. So in the meantime, as we, in, in, in January, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be bringing three ordinances to you, a parking ordinance, a transportation demand management ordinance, and a transportation management association. So a developer gets a permit to build.
Excuse me, I'm all done, thank you very much. No, no, I'm just saying, I'm all done, ask questions.
But no, I don't want to go on, but I, because I think I went over it once already, uh, a couple times probably. So, I just want to thank you for your time. No, 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 I know, I appreciate that. I, I want to thank you for your time, um, and just to let you know that, uh, there's no, no storm.
Mr. Mayor, if I may cut in for one second. We do have four other speakers.
Four other speakers?
I'm going to recommend, as the President, to hold those over as committee of a whole. Uh, no disrespect to anybody who still wants to speak, and the ones that already spoke, it's just.
Yeah.
We have four more speakers, and we have a lot of residents, and, uh.
Well, if they're four new speakers, I think you're, you're supposed to give them the right to ask, say something, but that's.
One minute.
Well, it's your, it's your thing, good. If I was the city councilor, and I didn't have the right to speak yet.
It's just my recommendation, if nobody wants to second it, it's up to you. Okay. Some of, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Sorry, but thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're all set?
Thank you.
Okay.
Item number eleven is the, uh, next, uh, on the agenda, it's a, um.
If, if we could, uh, Mr. President.
Councilor Capone?
We've had a couple of, um, individuals that came before the, the committee this evening, and they should be relatively quick. If we could take them first, take items thirteen and fourteen, spend rolls, take them, they're been here since six o'clock.
Second, all in favor? Take thirteen and fourteen? Ayes have it?
Item number thirteen on the agenda.
Item number thirteen, Mr. President, is a petition from Council Richard Delas, Delas, excuse me, Richard J. Delasola Jr., as President, that City Council hereby approves a new auto repair license for O'Drak Auto Repair at three sixty-three Third Street, and three sixty, excuse me. Item number fourteen, Mr. President, is petition, Mr. Delasola as President, that the Everett City Council hereby approves a new motor vehicle deal license for Boston Motors USA at forty-five forty-seven Mystic Street.
Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. These came out of committee without recommendation, because the city clerk wasn't available to speak on the items, to see if there were any issues. He has since called in, he said there are no issues with each of these parcels, so we could vote for it, but, uh, but the chairman, address.
Councilor Florio?
Uh, yes, we can vote on them, and these are only transfers. These locations already hold the license, it's just that somebody else has taken it over, so they know the rules, they know the laws, they know the regulations, everything is in order, so I have no problem with favorable recommendations.
Second motion.
Favorable action on both of them?
On both of them.
With the restrictions that are currently in place.
Yeah.
Correct. Roll call, please.
Item number thirteen, favorable action. Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor Florio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councilor Marchese?
Yes.
Councilor Matuski?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Polatano?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
President Delasola?
Yes.
You have eight ayes, you have passed, zero nays.
Read fourteen, please.
Item number fourteen, Mr. President, favorable action. Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor Florio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councilor Marchese?
Yes.
Councilor Matuski?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Polatano?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
President Delasola?
Yes.
Eight ayes, zero nays, you have passed.
Thank you.
Folks, just so you know, um, in a few days, in three days, the license will be ready, so actually, as of Thursday, you can go, Thursday morning, you can go to the city, uh, city clerk's office, and the license should be all set for you.
Thank you again. Clerk, can you read number eleven, please, on the agenda?
Item number eleven, Mr. President, that the Planning Department and the Everett Redevelopment Authority provide an update on the School Street Municipal Parking Lot, request for information, the proposals, and where we are in the process.
Seconded? All in favor? Just please state your name, please.
Good evening, my name's David Rigucci, I'm the chairman of the Everett Redevelopment.
Just make sure that, excuse me, just make sure that mic is on, both mics.
Hello?
There you go.
I'm Dave Rigucci, I'm the chairman of the Everett Redevelopment Authority.
Good evening, uh, my name is Tusco Hancy, I'm the economic development planner here with the city.
Thank you.
And we are here to talk to you about, um, give you an update on the urban renewal plan for Everett Square, um, which was passed by the council and approved by the state earlier this year. Um, the first step in that plan, um, is really tackling the municipal parking lot at thirty-six Norwood Street, um, again, it's a municipally-owned parking lot, um, and earlier this summer, we, um, released a RFI, a request for interest, to solicit, um, proposals for the redevelopment of this parking lot. So, um, in the packet you've got before you, you should have a map, um, a couple of pictures. Um, the map, the red outline, is the municipal parking lot, it's just over an acre in, in size, with about a hundred parking spaces, um, with access points on School Street, Norwood Street, and Quarry Street. Um, the blue parcels that you see outlined are, uh, the directly abutting privately-owned parcels, um, that make up the, the heart of Everett Square. Um, Bouvier Building, for reference, is on the corner on the top right-hand. The other two pictures that you see to your, to your left, or to your right, on the, on piece of paper in front of you, are just simple massing studies, just to give you an idea of what, um, the byright, um, four-story development could look like, just again, a simple massing study. So, um, turning to the next page, just to give you a simple, uh, kind of outline of what the timeline, in terms of where we are in the, the process. Um, so earlier in the summer, we, again, released the, uh, request for interest, um, and it was just a high-level concept, um, that's really what we're soliciting, uh, looking for from developers. That was open for two months, and it closed on August twenty-ninth. During that time, we did a ton of regional outreach in terms of advertising, um, we were really interested in getting a lot of interest, uh, from regional developers or investors, um, included over ninety thousand targeted emails, um, and also paid campaigns, uh, ad campaigns in New England Real Estate Journal, as well as Biz Now and LinkedIn ads, which are all, um, commercial real estate media outlets. Um, during this process, we've also retained BSC Group consultants, they were also paramount in helping create the urban renewal plan. Um, they advised that we could expect anywhere from two to five proposals, and that would be a successful, um, RFI. At the end, uh, as of August twenty-ninth, we received five proposals, a combination of local, regional, and national developers. Um, and I'll get into that, uh, just, uh, in the next page, I just want to kind of finish the timeline to make sure that we all kind of know where, um, we are. So, over the last several weeks, um, so we had the five proposals in hand, uh, beginning of the fall. Um, the last couple of weeks, we spent, um, interviewing each of the five development teams. We brought them, um, into City Hall, and myself, Tony, um, Tony Sousa, Dave Rigucci, Colleen Mejia, um, as well as our BSC Group consultants, interviewed each of the development teams for two hours. Um, and it was really to expand on their proposal. Again, it was a concept-level, um, proposal, so we really wanted to delve into their approach and other things that we're, um, looking for. Again, we're, what we've identified, and I think you all have the RFI, um, the actual request, so this is what we've outlined in, in the RFI, is really, um, the essence of what was part of the U, the U R P. Um, and that's really what we hope to get at, at the interviews. So, once the, so that all of the five interviews are complete, um, it then went before the Everett Redevelopment Authority, um, and that group, um, with consultation with staff, um, City Hall staff, and our outside consultants, um, are recommending that three finalists move on to the, uh, next round of the selection, which would be a, a full request for proposal, um, which would include a full site plan review application, typical, and all the developments that you see before the planning board, as well as full, um, and detailed financial statements that include, um, all sources of financing, debt equity, tax credits, you, what, everything, and including the pro forma, to make sure that we are not only financing it, um, but the development is secure financially long-term. Because we really see ourselves as, the city sees ourselves as a partner in this development, uh, long-term. Um, so the RFP will, uh, the deadline for that will be in the spring, we're in the process of, um, finalizing, finalizing the verbiage for that. Um, and the finalists have been, all five proposals, or project development teams, have been notified, um, of their, um, selection or not selection. Um, once the RFP deadline in the spring occurs, then the proposals will go back before the, the Everett Redevelopment Authority, the ERA, um, and then they will ultimately, that board, along with the staff, will make a recommendation to the mayor, um, and the mayor will ultimately decide on, or select a developer, um, for the municipal parking lot. Um, so turning to the next page, so how did we decide, um, and how are we evaluating the proposals? Uh, again, this, this wording is really, um, these are kind of key selection criteria that we are looking at all of the proposals, and again, they're coming from the language used and outlined in the U R P. Um, so affordable housing is really paramount to this, and something that we're, um, very much considering as part, as we're looking at all of these proposals, as well as open space and community space, both in terms of exterior space, but also interior space, community rooms, those types of things. Um, important to this development is not only, um, the municipal parking lot, but also the abutting, propose, uh, abutting and private parcels along Norwood and School Street. We're really seeing the municipal parking lot as a catalyst to inspire, um, and inject development and redevelopment into Everett Square, and create vibrancy, um, a renewed vibrancy in, in the city square. Um, so really, in, in, to that vein, consider, consideration and partnership with existing tenants, the privately-owned parcels and the butters, um, is really important to this development, um, and how we're considering it. Mixed-use, high-density development, so again, typical kind of mixes of commercial, retail, office, hotel, residential, all, um, proposals that are being advanced to the final round, all have some, um, mix of those, all of those elements. Adequately addressing public concern, public parking, um, requirements, both existing requirements and future public, public parking requirements. Um, we hear this, uh, every day, and this is a primary concern for business owners, obviously, that are, um, in that area, so we're very much, um, this is, this is on our radar in terms of how we're evaluating these, these proposals. Aligned with the goals of the, the U R P, goes without saying, um, does the development, uh, foster a sense of place and create a vibrancy of the streetscape? So how is this really going to catalyze development and vibrancy, um, on the sidewalks, and will it draw people, um, there? Catalyzing economic growth? How many permanent new jobs does it create? Um, as well as, you know, we need to make sure that the financial and performance capacity of the developer that we're bringing in is at, not only adequate, but they have superior references and are fully capable of doing these things. Um, so the proposals that we've advanced are Chestnut Equity, Dijar Alamo Companies, Legacy Building and Development Corporation. The proposals that, um, or the development teams that submitted proposals but are not being advanced, um, or asked to submit to the next round, the RFP, are Equity Residential and Sacro Development. That's kind of the general overview. Dave, do you have anything to?
All right. Any questions, Dave Counselors?
I have five councilors that want to speak. I'll start with, well, with Florio and Hanlon, John Hanlon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm not stopping anybody from speaking, that's definitely not my, this is a lot to absorb, and, and to see all this, I think this is the type of stuff that we need to have individual in a committee as a whole. This is the prime example. Because everything is given to us tonight, we don't have time to look at it, and to really come up with concrete questions. So, um, to me, I recommend it to go to a committee as a whole, but I certainly don't want to stop anybody from talking, that's not, I'm not trying not to be fear, but even inviting the new counselors up and doing one thing at a time, I think it would be less confusion, and we know what we're voting on, and we know exactly what we're doing. Lumpen everything together at, late at night, is, is kind of hard. Like I said, we have this book in front of us, there's no possible way we looked at this whole book. So that, that, my, my recommendation is to send it to committee as a whole, and that, and I put that in the form of a motion, that's why I'm not asking any questions.
I have a second on that motion.
Mr. President, on the motion?
I got two that want to speak, Councilor McGlaughlin and Councilor Hanlon. On the motion.
On the motion, I would just respectfully ask, I, I agree with Councilor Florio, but I would ask that we get the submittals for all five proposals, so that we can see all five proposals, and be able to understand how they came to the conclusion to deciding the three finalists. So if they would be able to release the submittals to, uh, the committee, to the city council, so that we can see it before the, uh, before the meeting.
Can I respond?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Um, so all of the proposals will be made public, um, as well as meeting minute notes from the ERA, um, any other supporting documentation, um, will be made public at the completion of the RFP process. So it's under, um, the advices of our city council and outside council, that during this time, because it's, we're under negotiation, and it could actually hinder the city's, um, negotiation stance, that we, the proposals remain, um, confidential for now.
Thank you. Councilor Hanlon on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do agree that it goes to a committee to look at it, uh, as what they have said, but I want to make sure I'm, I'm working on the, the right thing. And, um, I had a chance to look through this, and on page five, there's a, a block of applicable zoning, dimensional regulations?
Yep.
Okay. And, um, I want to make sure, this is going to apply for what, what we're talking about, zoning redevelopment in Everett Square?
So.
In the area, in the area that you have blocked out, you know, showed Norwood Street and.
Byright, that's what the zoning regulations are. Um, we've had conversations with developer, uh, with the teams, um, and going forward, there are, there may be relief that may be needed, um, to create and make a successful.
No, I don't, I don't want to, you know, tie this up, because like we say, it should go to committee, but I'm just concerned that this is talking about one, two, or three-family dwellings, aside yards, and thirty, and, and so on. That's not going to apply in this, in this area. You know, I mean, why would we be, and I want to make sure that I don't apply that, because, you know, you know what Seaver said, side yards, front yards? I mean, you know.
Excuse me, Councilor May.
Look at any building on Norwood Street, there are no front yards.
Councilor May just cut in, we're going to send it to committee, we had other speakers that wanted to speak, so we're going to go to committee, I think we go right to committee, we send it to committee. If, I have, other people want to speak on the motion, at that point you might as well open it up for the night.
All right, I don't know, I'll, I'll start.
No disrespect, I just, everybody wants to talk on the motion, at that point you might as well.
I don't want to talk on it, I just wanted to get a point squared away, that, is that going to apply to this building that we're going to be building, that's all. Because you got to read it, you got to read it all together, you know, so.
Okay, so, where the motion to go to committee? It was seconded? All in favor?
All in.
All opposed?
Committee of a whole.
The ayes, uh, committee of a whole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. President, also, on the, um, just out of courtesy, we had Mr. Mackey, who's in the audience, he wanted to speak on item number eleven also, so I don't know if Mr. Mackey would just accept coming to the.
Too late, send up the committee.
Yes, that's what I meant.
Maybe any of the abutters in that area that wanted to be there.
You can also be invited.
Yes. The abutters of this, right. All the abutters of the, uh, Everett Square, where it's going to affect them, will be invited.
Am I invited to say something?
No.
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 Nothing, you can say it right there.
All the abuddists of the, uh, Everett Square, where it's going to affect them, will be invited.
Am I invited to say something?
No.
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 Nothing, you can say it right there.
No, sorry, you can't. Counselor? Okay, the last person on the shining sheet we have, um, Mr. President then, is item number, uh, 51 is, um, Jay Monte.
Can the rules take out 51? Second to motion.
Okay, in favor?
Where is 51?
Right, item 51.
Item number 51, Mr. President. If you order by the city council, City of Everett, Massachusetts, as follows, that the Everett City Council hereby establishes a citywide parking benefits district to be known as the Everett Parking Benefits District under the management of the mayor, for which parking revenues collected therein may be reserved for use in such district for the purposes listed in General Laws, C40, subsection 22A.
Just state your name for the record.
Uh, Jay Monte, Transportation Planner.
Second to motion.
All in favor? All in favor? Council Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could you explain this program, Mr. Monte?
Sure.
And then I, my question, I do have just one or two questions.
Sure. So, and I think this is actually timely for tonight's meeting, because there are some items on the agenda about, um, you know, the parking lot across the North Park Casino, revenues from that. And what this does, what it aims to do is actually bring, um, some accountability to revenues brought in from parking. Today, those revenues go directly to our general fund, they can go anywhere. Uh, what this actually does is says that funds taken in through parking, whether it be through meters, lots, what have you, um, would be directed to, uh, the maintenance of those lots, the improvement of pedestrian amenities, um, you know, basically transportation infrastructure. So, i- in our view, that creates a, it's a higher level of accountability for these funds. We can certainly pay, uh, enforcement staff from this fund, um, any of the functions we currently provide for parking will be eligible, um, you know, plus if we wanted to, you know, do street calming, um, in neighborhoods, if we want to do, um, you know, repave the, the parking lot in Everett Square, we will be able to direct these funds to that, for that purpose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much, Mr. Monte, for being here this evening. I kind of like the idea where the parking lots are to benefit the neighborhood that the parking lot is actually in. The money stays in that particular area for landscaping and improvement, sidewalks, benches.
Yep.
Uh, the casino parking lot is only going to be good for three years, is a rough estimate. So that, uh, will we own any other, uh, parking area there?
At this time, we don't know that we will or will not. I think having this in place would, uh, allow us, if the opportunity available itself again, um, you know, the mayor talked about, you know, shared parking agreements with property owners maybe, or, uh, other, other opportunities, opportunities that you may have to, um, generate revenue through parking, you know, it will be directed into this fund.
And, and back of Rite Aid, there's a parking lot there. The city owns that.
Right, that's a city parking lot.
So that would improve that little neighborhood, which is one of the nicest neighborhoods in the city.
Yep.
And that parking lot needs a little work.
Yep.
And there's no landscaping to go with it. And that would include, of course, School Street, City Hall parking lot. And what other parking lots are we, uh, that we have?
So this would allow revenue from any of our parking meters, whether you're a Broadway, a Ferry Street, um, Main Street, you know, meters on Main Street. Um, so that, the whole, the catchment area would be the whole city.
Oh, I see.
But the area you could apply to would also be the whole city, so it would not be necessarily.
Wherever the meters are.
Wherever the meters are, right.
I see.
Yeah.
I kind of like that idea. Okay, that's about it, I have no questions. Thank you, Mr. Monte.
Thank you, Counsel. I got Counsel Capone and then Counsel Mackaysey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Monte. Good evening. So, if I understand it correctly, yeah, this would be a dedicated fund, money would come in, it would be for those types of purposes.
Right.
Um, and the selling point, obviously, the accountability. I mean, you, you could still have accountability, and I'm trying to understand why it would be beneficial for us to take funds out of a general fund, which we could use for any purpose, and handcuff ourselves and put it into a reserve fund.
Yeah, I mean, I think, we, we come back to the accountability piece, really. Um, it, it, we know that, uh, if somebody puts a quarter into the meter, if somebody puts a dollar bill into the meter, um, they can do that with the assurance that it's going to go back into the transportation system.
Okay. All right. Uh, I don't necessarily buy that, but I understand the point. And speaking of accountability, I had a piece on at our last meeting, talked about the meters, about the hours of operation. We have nothing posted. We don't have it on the machines, we don't have it on the signs. So, in theory, it looks like it's a 24-hour parking situation. It's something that a couple of folks have brought to my attention, and I looked at a couple of locations, and, as a matter of fact, I myself got a ticket at 5:45, and I thought the meter would have been done by 5:00, but I don't, I still, to this point, don't know what the parking hours are.
I'll get it, I, I, I was, in my impression, that we had that information on the meters, but if we don't, I will.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Mackaysey and Counsel Apolitano.
I think I'm going off, um, off, I kind of like the trend we're talking about. I, it, you know, we're talking about revenues and stuff, and something that came up that we, I've never seen in the city of Everett. Do we have anything for electric cars to charge?
Um, we, we're in some conversations with, uh, EverSource and some of the, you know, electrical providers.
Yeah, sometimes there's a designated spot or something, actually.
Right.
What's that?
But, but this, this is something that you could use those funds for.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I've seen them in other cities, I just said, now come we've never, I mean, there's a lot of electric cars around, you know, some of them go to charge, I don't know what the, their cost, I have no idea what it costs, nor it costs to set it up, but I'm sure there's some companies up there that would come in and do it, but I know, I'm going off target here, I'm just. Thank you.
Counsel Apolitano.
Thank you. All right, I'm not sure if this was spelled out, so, um, so can we be more specific now? The revenue generated by all of this is, uh, going to be used in a, in such a district, for the purposes listed in General Laws, chapter 40, subsection 22A. What exactly does that mean?
So I can read it off.
Where is the money, where is, how, how is this money being utilized?
So I can read off the eligible uses of that.
Please.
Okay. Acquisition, installation, maintenance, and operation of parking meters and other parking payments and enforcement technology, regulation of parking, salaries of parking management personnel, improvements to the public realm like street trees, parklets, and curb cuts, transportation improvements, which include, but are not limited to, the operation of mass transit facilities for biking and walking.
All right. And you said that the, uh, this will allow better management of the funds for that purpose?
It, it just, I guess it's an accountability measure, it ensures that money that we take from parking stays within the use of transportation.
So, let me ask you this. Is this money covering all of our needs under that? Or is there still going to be a need to pull money from that, from the general fund?
I don't think it would cover all of our needs, no.
Well, if it doesn't cover all of the needs, then why, why are we talking about, about accountability here? See, the thing is that this is, this is isolating that money for specific purposes, but you, you just, as you just said, this money's not going to cover 100% of our needs in those purposes. It's better set in the, in the general fund, so it can be utilized when it, where it needs to be utilized, when it needs to be utilized. Uh, I mean, you, you got a long way to sell me on this, because I don't see the need. If, unless, unless the money from our meters were covering 100% of our needs of what, other, under what's covered by the general law, uh, then I'd say, fine. But if it isn't, and we're still going to need to pull money out of the general fund, then it's just another way to isolate money for a specific purpose that isn't enough to be able to, to solve that purpose. I think there's better ways to be able to, to adjust that. And again, I'm not convinced that this is necessarily the best way to go. Thank you.
Actually, we wouldn't want to echo the comments of Counsel Apolitano, which is what he just stated. If we're not going to see 100% of accountability out of this department, then why, out of this account, then why, why create this, uh, reserve account? Is it going to pay for salaries in the parking department? Can you pay for salaries out of the parking department?
Um, we'd have to look at the amount we're taking in, possibly. I believe that's roughly the amount we utilize today. Um, I have to look to Eric to see. No. Oh, we don't, okay. Um, no, I, I, I think the point of this, I mean, you can, you can use that for personnel. Um, the point is, we have a lot of requests for.
So you say you can use a personnel to see?
No, you can use the money out of this for personnel currently.
Eric, tell us.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Nice have it. Eric Gaimis, CFO.
Hi, Eric, good evening.
I only got just a few of the words that you were saying, this conversation going in the hallway.
Okay, no, no, probably not.
You can just repeat yourself.
So absolutely, so can salaries be paid for out of this reserved account for the monies that were taken in from the meters? Can we pay for employee salaries?
Salaries would still be held out of the general fund.
So it cannot be utilized for salary?
No, it can be. It can be, um, but the fees that would be generated into this fund wouldn't be sufficient to cover all of the salaries. And then, so you'd be looking at, um, a portion of the general fund and then a portion that was.
But we have a lot of positions in the city that are taking a, a piece of this and a piece of that, and, and taking money out of different accounts or different departments, even, to be able to pay for certain individual salaries because of different tasks that they hold or, or do in the city of Everett. So this can't, uh, just as simple as, it can or cannot be used for salaries. See, I'm not trying to trick you guys, but you both are telling me two totally different things.
It can be used for salaries, it, but it won't be sufficient to generate, to cover all of the salaries.
And that's okay, but it can be utilized to, uh, offset some of the, the costs for salaries.
Some of the costs associated, yes.
And that's what concerns me, to be very frank with you. Having it out of the general fund makes it more streamlined, we're able to track it easier and better, uh, where we can talk about salaries and, and being able to potentially hire somebody else and only pay half their salary out of, out of general, out of, and then you pay a half out of this reserves account, and then you're not really being able to track who's paying for what and who, it's a very concerning point to me.
Just to, just to, just to add in, I understand exactly what you're saying, but the primary purpose from what transportation, um, um, and planning had decided to put this forth was really for capital improvements and capital infrastructure. So there are a lot of things that you can do, it's not what you plan, not necessarily everything that was planned on doing, just because it's allowable by law.
Yeah, no, and that sounds great tonight, that we talk about this, 95% of it is going to go to capital improvement plan, right? But tomorrow morning, that 95% can get the window down to 40%, and then you, you have the range to be able to do whatever you so choose to do, which is to staff and to hire or, or to move staff salaries into this line item, pretty up to the point of being able to fund them out of there. So it's a concern to me that tonight, we talk about capital improvement, that sounds great, but tomorrow, if we vote on this, it's a whole new ballgame. So I, again, to be honest with you, I can't vote on this tonight. I think we're way off topic before I could support something like this, but I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Counsel. We have any more, any more speaking for our guest? Any more questions? Thank you very much. Counsel Capone.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. On the piece itself, a couple of my colleagues have kind of followed in line with my thought process on this. I understand the intention, but the reality is, right now, the revenues that are generated from these machines can be used for any purpose that we need as a community, and, uh, if we were to establish this, we would actually be handcuffing ourselves. And I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be using the funds however we see fit in minimizing our options. So I will not be supporting this this evening.
Counsel Apolitano.
Thank you. I mean, the point I was trying to establish was the fact that, uh, though in spirit, it seems like a good idea, uh, you know, capital improvements need to stay in capital improvements, they can come for us in the normal way. I don't think, you know, this money, if it's not capable of, of funding its entire purpose, and we'd still need to draw money from the general fund, then it's better spent in the general fund, and let's take them, uh, during budget season, during, uh, capital improvement time, uh, special appropriations. However we need to move the money, uh, we'll move the money. But isolating this amount where it's not even enough to cover the full need of what it can, it can, um, uh, encompass, uh, I'm going to say, I'm going to have to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Yeah. Do a roll call vote, please.
Item number 11, excuse me, 51 for favorable action. Counsel Capone.
No.
Counsel de Florio.
No.
Counsel de Perro.
No.
Counsel Hanlon.
No.
Counsel Mackaysey.
No.
Counsel Matuski.
No.
Counsel McKinnon. Counsel McLaughlin.
No.
Counsel Apolitano.
No.
Counsel Simonelli.
No.
President Della Sola.
No.
10 nays, 0 yays, you're filled.
I'd like to make a motion and take items 23 to 38 off the, uh.
23.
Yep. 23 to 38. Wait, hold it. Which one do I, what I, what?
Want to start from 15 on?
Oh, 15, I'm, no, wait. No, it'd be 16, I'm sorry. No, wait, hold it. 17, 17.
17. So 17 to?
I'd like to amend that to reach 17 to 38.
Second? All in favor?
All.
Nice have it.
Now, just so you know, the, we, uh, we'll all go down as one, but it's, there has to be a separate vote, unfortunately, on each petition. So get ready for.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, if we could on this, I know that we've done this in the past, and I know that you want to keep everything separately, but, I mean, if, if we voted favorable action on each piece, or, and then have our clerk report it accordingly, so that unless, unless there came a situation where one of the items, or more than one items, people had a disagreement, if everybody was in favor of them, we, we probably could take one vote with the instruction to our clerk to report it accordingly. We probably could do that. Obviously, it's cleaner to just do individual votes.
Right.
But if there's not going to be any controversy and everybody's in favor, I think we could do it. Uh, but before we even get to the vote, there's contractual language that we, we need to look at real quick. Um, so, uh, did we already suspend the rules and take them collectively?
No.
No.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that point, so let's, let's at least get that fired, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Make a move to take them all collectively. Suspend the rules. Suspend the rules, take them collectively. Anybody?
Second?
17 to 38.
Second?
To 17.
All in favor?
All.
All opposed? The eyes have it. Take 17 to 38, correct?
Counsel, did you want to, did you want to have somebody speak? Um, I'm sorry.
Counsel Capone.
If, if we could please have the petitioner before us, who's been very patient this evening.
Yes, she has.
She could please come before us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Rosanna Ferranti here on behalf of Extonet.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you.
I say the most patient?
Yes.
Yes, we've had all year. Thank you very much.
No problem.
We do appreciate your patience. Through you to our guest. Have you had a chance to, to read this master license agreement?
No, we have, we actually submitted comments.
Okay.
So, so we have submitted comments to the city solicitor's office.
Okay, do, do we have a representative from the solicitor? Would you please have, uh, representative as well?
We actually made an effort to make them minimal.
Okay.
In the interest of collaboration.
Good evening, Keith Slattery, Assistant City Solicitor.
Thank you, Attorney Slattery. So, we've got all the plays at the table here. Where, where are we at with regards to, I guess, some language that came into the office, some comments?
So, um, we did, the solicitor's office had gone through the agreement, and we also passed it through outside counsel, so what has been represented to you with the red lines is sound.
Okay.
So it's sound in, in all phases, including indemnity and maintenance. I think the only thing that the counsel would need to consider is the term of length.
Right, right.
But otherwise, the, the contract.
So with regards to comments made from your, your company, is that incorporated Where are we at with regards to, I guess, some language that came into the office, some comments?
So we did, the solicitor's office had gone through the agreement, and we also passed it through outside counsel. So what has been represented to you with the red lines is sound.
Okay.
So it's sound in all phases, including indemnity and maintenance. I think the only thing that the counsel would need to consider is the term of length.
Right, right.
But otherwise, the contract...
So with regards to comments made from your company, is that incorporated in this body, or is it something over and above this?
I'm not sure what you received. I know that term was what we had commented on. So I believe that we had set a ten-year initial term.
Right. Initially, that was discussed in...
That's the revised term.
Yeah.
Okay, oh yeah, then it's right here, yes. So then you do have the...
Yeah, that's on page two, and way back when, when all this all started, this guy right here was saying...
I remember.
Five years, and there wasn't an issue with that, as long as we had the ability to do amendments. Is that an issue now, or no?
Well, unfortunately, I can't negotiate that term. That's with my legal counsel.
Right.
So I had given, I told him to look at this. I relayed the concern.
Okay.
However, as you might expect, the reason why we need the longer term is just the investment we make in the network.
Right.
And building out, and the reliance that we have for the customers. And so if we had that risk at five years, now, technology can change, so I'm certainly not going to say that nothing could ever change, but I think from an infrastructure standpoint, that's why it's ten years.
Okay. And I remember having that discussion with you at the time.
Yes.
I said, is that an issue to recoup your investment, et cetera?
Correct. It's all a business-related expense.
And I get that. And where the language in there has automatic renewal, that doesn't provide any additional comfort to move it from ten to five?
It's still that initial investment term.
Okay, all right. The only other issue that I have, other than term, is on page five, where it talks about removal or relocation. Currently, the document says that, once the item is either abandoned, or it's going to be removed or relocated, there's ninety days. And I think ninety days is a little bit long. I was gonna make a recommendation to reduce that down to sixty. Does that create any kind of discomfort?
So the problem that we can face is that it's not just us going and taking that. We may have to coordinate with grid, or other, you know, other utilities that are involved.
Okay.
And so that's why it's a little tenuous.
Okay. Because you need to get agreement from them, and they've got to coordinate the outfits.
Exactly, yes.
And we know, as a municipality, that doesn't move as smoothly as you'd like.
I mean, we push. We kind of, we push, but...
Okay. I don't have any questions, but I will just tell you upfront, I am going to request my colleagues to amend that ten to a five. And if it causes an issue, I guess it causes an issue. I think ten years is too long, especially with there's automatic renewal language in there. I don't know if that causes any concern from the city's position.
No, that's within the counsel's right.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Any more questions from the counsel? Counsel McGlaughlin?
Through you, Mr. President, to Ms. Ferranti. Ms. Ferranti, thank you again. You've been here more than I can imagine. Yeah. Ms. Ferranti, what happens if we do support Counsel Capone's motion tonight to amend this down to a five-year term? Will your company then look at not negotiating this contract, and exercise this contract?
Because I don't have the authority to negotiate, I can't comment on their reaction. I can just represent what their position is, I can go back with what your position is, and then we can go from there. I mean, that's the best I can commit to.
And to be honest with you, again, you've spent a lot of time here. I do like the less than ten-year term in there. I think that it just gives us some more safety net in there. I would hate to go late for this any longer than it needs to be, because you've been here quite frequent. I just don't know what happens tomorrow if we vote on this for five years, and your company says no, then we're back square one.
I think it's a negotiation outside of...
Do we need to...
It's probably between...
Legally, you can ratify this at the first term of five years, and then it has self-renewal for two periods of five-year after that, as long as there's no rescinding clause from this body or any other of the administration. So effectively, that's what you'd be granting, and then they would have to be ratified and accepted by the other party.
Okay.
If that's your position, I will go back and relay.
I'm just wondering if, honestly, and I hate to even say these words, but if we should table this for two weeks and ask your legal counsel to come here to have a discussion with us, so that we can get this done once and for all, or whoever you need to go back and talk to tomorrow?
So I think that there might be a way to condition, right? I mean, I think that the agreement is tied to the random locations, however, you could condition it on a mutually agreeable agreement being, you know, agreed upon. I'm not sure how you guys would handle that, but...
This is the body.
Okay. All right. I fully trust Counsel Capone's thoughts, and I support those, but I'm just kind of figuring where we go from tomorrow on this, because obviously, your company wants ten years.
It's one issue, so I would go back first thing in the morning and try to resolve it.
Thank you. Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we're all into an agreement with a five-year, and you can renew every five years. So I don't see why we have to lay this on the table again. It's been here three months. That's what we want. That's what we want to agree to, is five years. Agreement in every five years, it gets renewed. So just pass it, and that's it. Instead of going back and forth, it's been back and forth for three months. So call for the vote, let it go, and that's what our rule is. I understand this poor woman has been here for three months, explaining it, explaining to committee, coming back to the floor, going back and forth.
Seems almost like five years.
It's really okay. It's really okay.
No, it's enough. It's enough. So the point is, these are the conditions we want. We're the city councils, we set the conditions. Set the conditions and move on. Thank you.
We have any more questions? Any more questions for our guest? Thank you very much. Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. There really are two options, but I think the Counsel DeFlorio is right. One option would be to get the agreement of the petition and extend it one more time. But the reality is, whether you extend it or not, I'm not going to be comfortable with more than five years. So if the company isn't happy with five years, I'll be voting no. So I'm gonna make two amendments to the piece, and we'll put it up to the body to do what they want to do. The first thing is, with regards to the term, I want to amend it from ten years to five years.
I second that amendment.
Do one at a time. So you're gonna go ten years to five years.
Correct.
It was seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Yeah, it's already in there, yeah. And then the second amendment would be, I know that this is different than the one we got tonight, but it's page eight, where it says notices, it's section eleven, or paragraph eleven, notices to the municipality. Obviously, we know it's the City of Everett, but I would just say that we put the language in there, it's City of Everett, and the contact person most likely should be the city solicitor's office.
Second.
Second. Okay. We'll do roll call vote to go from ten to five.
You could do it as amended.
It was, I think you went down as to, when you did yea, nay, whatever, I think you should do is take a roll call vote to see, first of all, if you're in favor of, like, of the amendment first.
Well, the amendment is on a roll call. At the end, when we take the whole thing, the amendment will take the whole thing.
No, no. Counselor, it was a voice vote, but what happens, just in my opinion, he can do it again. But there were some yays, there were some nays. So I'm just saying is that...
We'll leave it up to the president to determine whether or not...
I don't know, maybe, I thought I heard, I could be wrong, but I mean, it's up to you, Mr. President.
Is that good? Do a roll call vote.
Okay, let's go.
And is this for both amendments?
You can take them separately, or you can take them...
Separately or collectively?
Should take them separately.
Take them separately. We'll do ten to five years.
Okay, on the first one, Counsel Capone's amendment to go from ten to five years, that's be the first one. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePero.
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Counsel Matouski.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon. Counsel McGlaughlin. Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli. President Delasola.
Yes.
Any doubts, though?
No.
Nope. Just making sure, just making sure. Nine yays, zero nays, you have amended from ten to five years. Now, on the second piece, amend to Counsel Capone, at the City of Everett and the solicitor's office?
Yeah, the attention to the solicitor's office. And then, where it says with a copy, you might as well send it either to the clerk's office, the man's office, either one is fine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
The eyes have it.
Favorable action as amended.
Second.
Roll call vote. Roll call vote as amended. Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel DePero.
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Counsel Matouski.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli. President Delasola.
Yes.
Nine yays, zero nays, you have passed as amended.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Well, that's the contract language.
Now, we're going to...
The petitions.
Now, as the petition, as speaking to Mr. Burley, if any one of yous objects to any one of these pieces, we have to do them separately. We can do it, as Counsel Capone suggested, one vote.
I move to do such.
Again, if anybody's against, I have to need to know now. If anybody's against any one of these pieces, we need to know now.
Counsel Capone.
So with regards to these pieces being voted, it would be, we'd be, yeah, seventeen through thirty-eight, I believe it is, assuming to the terms of the contract. And I think, I don't know that we've formally enrolled the ordinance regarding small cell wireless, but it would be conditioned upon that as well. And we might want city council back up here to address that point. Okay? So we, all right, so we hammered out some language on the contract, just took care of the little housekeeping things. So now we've got these petitions in front of us, and I don't think we've firmly adopted our small wireless facility rules ordinance yet. But if we condition the approval upon the terms of the agreement, and the acceptance of whatever the final version here is, we should be all set.
They still complement each other perfectly.
Okay. Very good. All right, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Thank you to our guest.
Really? I can't, nobody else?
So on pieces seventeen through thirty-eight, the motion would be for favorable action, subject to the language of the contract that we approved, and the language of small wireless facility rules and regulations that the city eventually puts in place.
Second.
Seconded. Roll call vote.
And on that motion, it would be that one vote be cast, and our clerk be instructed to report it and record it accordingly.
Okay. Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePero.
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Counsel Matouski.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon. Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli. President Delasola.
Yes.
Nine yays, zero nays, you have passed.
Please suspend the rules and take number forty-five from the calendar, please.
All in favor? Eyes have it. Forty-five, you said, Counselor?
Forty-five, yes.
Item number forty-five, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael Marquez, that the city explain what is the revenue and tax situation for the parking lot across the street from Encore Casino. And I have it put on your desk earlier, all the attachments for that.
Counsel Marquez.
If we have Mr. Demus come up and kind of just straighten this out one second, I have a couple of questions.
Counsel Marquez.
Oh, here, Mr. Demus.
I'm what, hurry, sir?
Quick question. I was going through our payouts, more or less, to the parking facility down there. You've had some numbers on it, and I can't find, I put mine. You had a figure in there, there was a twelve thousand a month payment, that you probably remember, oh, obviously, remember, twelve thousand, was it, three thousand a month payment, management payment, to them somehow, it was thirty-six thousand.
As part of their management fees underneath the terms of the contract.
But there was four hundred and seventy thousand also. What was that?
The total cost of the contract, if we utilize the full specs as they proposed.
Yes.
Would have been in excess of four hundred thousand for the year.
Okay.
However, that was a not to exceed.
Yeah.
And that was assuming that the contract, the parking lot was going to be full twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Okay.
So what you're seeing is, month after month after month, what we've been doing is, as the needs or the use of that parking lot has diminished.
Yeah.
So have the terms of the contract. So we pulled a lot of the initial services they were providing at the opening, we've reduced those significantly.
And I noticed that the city is responsible for all repairs, and snow removal also, which there was no figure, I believe, on that yet.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah. When it was originally proposed, the specs were actually put together by Encore, consistent with their parking lots. And the original bid, I believe, came in in excess of eight hundred thousand dollars. And then what we did was, he said, that was far too excessive. There are a lot of things that we can do as a city, given our capabilities, and we pared a lot of that out.
I think another question I was asking, regarding the usage of the property, which is a parking lot, which changed already from residential to commercial. I don't know how they're being taxed on the taxi, I don't know if it's commercial or residential.
This year, they're being taxed as residential, what it was on one-one, consistent with Mass General Law.
Okay.
That will change next year.
Because what they did is, when they changed it to a parking lot, obviously, it became commercial.
Sure.
And you said it was made up of a bunch of different LLCs?
Yes.
So which LLC would have, actually have, be the parking lot? So that's kind of not how it should be. It should be one piece of property, if it's going to be that.
And that's a lot of the cleanup that Encore is doing, once they've opened.
Yeah.
And that issue will be resolved at the same time for next tax season, in accordance with Mass General Law, where we can change the actual use on the record.
Okay, so the actual use, we're going to be working on that, to change it to commercial. Because I believe they have, what, three years, or one year, one year, one year renewable?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so... Okay, so...
And you're actually talking with the three years, the one-one and one?
Yes.
With Propark? Yeah, in addition to that, we also have had thirty, sixty, ninety-day reviews.
Yeah.
And we're constantly tweaking the services that they provide. As the usage goes down, we're pulling down the required services under the terms of the contract.
Okay, okay. So if the usage was to increase, obviously, everything else would increase.
We're not looking to terminate the contract, but we're looking to pay as little as we possibly can. One of the things that we're actually working on with them right now is they're providing updated pricing on remote services.
Yeah.
So that we don't actually have to have it manned during the day, during the very slow periods.
Because I know, you know, all the stuff, paying the workers' comp, all the insurance liabilities, I know that was all bunched into that four hundred and seven, or plus, if there's snow removal there. So we're collecting residential taxes on that. And we're collecting a certain amount over their fees on the parking revenue?
Yes.
So...
And through September, the net amount was a little over four hundred, four hundred and fourteen thousand.
Yeah.
I don't yet have the figures for October, but I can tell you, last month, or last Saturday again, knowing I was coming back up, I think they were about seventy-two hundred dollars for the day.
Yeah.
So we're still collecting fees, even though the parking facility at Encore...
Yeah, one more question after that was, I just forgot what I was gonna ask you. One more, you went to residential, residential? I have plenty of senior moments. I'll yield, anybody else, if it comes back, I'll amend. If anybody has more questions.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, we're talking about, obviously, the parking lot that's across the street from the wind that we control, is that correct?
Yes.
And we only have a three-year lease on that?
Yes. Yes, three-year agreement.
We own it for three years agreement. So if there's empty spaces there, and because Encore has free parking now, all right, there's plenty of parking at the casino, so not, why would you pay twenty-two dollars across the street when you can go for free? Is there something that we can work out with the Encore people and have, the employees can't park anywhere there? Make it an employee parking lot for a year and pay us?
Underneath the terms with the state, the employees are not allowed to park there. What I can tell you is we are working with Propark and other businesses in the area to provide potentially some employee parking, like with Amazon and a few other organizations, Monday through Friday during the day when that lot's not being used. But it's my understanding is that the state won't allow the Encore employees to park there.
Okay. So what is the quarterly taxes on that, on the lot?
That I'll pull up for you. I provided that at the last meeting. I thought the only thing you wanted tonight was the update on the contract. I'll provide those to your email tomorrow morning.
Okay. No problem. All right, so I mean, it's, you know, having a parking lot empty is sad in the city of Everett, because parking is hard to find in the city, all right? So, and if employees, even people going to work in Boston, if we could get income instead of leaving that empty, I think we should really be looking into that, because why throw, we're throwing money away. Every lot, we do it for three years. For three years, we can do that. Am I correct, Mr. Demas?
That is correct.
Okay. So even if there's a year left, and it could mean even an extra half a million dollars, why give it away?
And that's certainly the mayor's opinion as well, and that's why we are working with Propark. Again, it's a fluid situation. At the time in which we started moving forward with this, nobody was under the impression that Encore was going to do what they did with their parking situation.
Well, I think they had to do that for business, and I agree with them.
Sure.
I'm not disagreeing with them. Everybody's a business to make money.
Sure.
So if it's going to stop people from going to a casino because of a parking lot, I think they were more concerned about the traffic. So they saw that the traffic wasn't a problem. They have to get people there. I mean, they have to make up all the money that they spend. It's not free. They're a nonprofit organization. They're here to make money. So if that's what's going to drive people to go there and gamble and make money, that's great. So I don't disagree with the free parking.
Where I was going with that, though, is as Encore is adjusting, we're adjusting as well.
Right. So, and that's what I was going to get to. So unfortunately, nobody has a crystal glass. Nobody knew what was going to happen. Now that we know, hopefully, we work digitally so that we get all this money coming in, because we're actually wasting money. So we need to be on top of it and really work hard to get that done.
And that's what we're doing, because the whole purpose is for us to maximize our opportunities there, albeit a short window. We certainly want to maximize those opportunities, and that's what we're working to pursue.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel McGlaughlin, and then Counsel Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, Mr. Demas. Just a statement, which is that I agree with Counsel Florio, but trying to utilize that parking lot in a more efficient way is better for the purpose of the parking lot. That being said, we cannot handle an abutment of more additional vehicles going down to Lower Broadway. So everybody in the North Shore that wants to come and park at that parking lot, the mayor was here for an hour tonight talking about BRT, rapid buses and so forth, you can't get around the rotary. I was going to say that to the mayor at the end. We can talk all day long, we want, but we can't get a bus around the rotary. If anybody hasn't seen the rotary in the first thing in the morning, place is an absolute nightmare. So to be able to say that we're going to use that parking lot, if we can use, I mean, negotiate contracts like Amazon that already has employees going down there that can utilize that parking lot, or some other company that's already there that can utilize it for their employees, I'll find it well. But to make it a municipal lot for everybody in BBD and Danvers and the North Shore to come into that lot to be able to get into Boston to work, it's going to set the city up for a major disaster.
That's what we're not pursuing right now?
Yeah.
We're pursuing exactly that, where there are other businesses down in that area.
That are already pre-existing there.
Yes.
Fantastic. Because if we were talking about the other scenario, the place is already a nightmare. I think all my colleagues will agree that that rotary in the morning takes you a half an hour, if not longer, to get around that rotary. So I can't imagine utilizing that parking lot for a purpose of parking cars to come in and use it as that purpose. But if we're talking about companies that are already there, so well, and good luck on it, because I think the better we can utilize that lot, the better it would be for the area.
We're looking to explore all those opportunities, that, number one, will maximize the use of that lot, at the same time, not create any additional constraints from a traffic area that already exists.
Yeah, absolutely. Because I think when we had all the police detail on the rotary, it worked out really well. The rotary was really going well when all that police detail was up there. The police detail disappeared, and the cars went crazy again, and they just, they almost driving into each other. It's like a war zone down there, to be honest with you. So I really think that that is a great utilized opportunity, if it is done correctly. And longer term, we need to really talk about that rotary, and how if we're going to get rapid buses around there to go down Ninety-Nine into Sullivan Square, if it's for that, how do we get around that rotary? And that's the first stuff that needs to be figured out before we really talk about everything the mayor was talking about tonight. But thank you, Mr. Demas.
Thank you, Counsel. I got one more speaker. Counsel Hanlon?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mr. Demas, are there any statistics on how many people park in that area? Do you have anything that today they parked ten cars and tomorrow they park twenty, anything like that at all?
Are you talking about the parking lot or the area in general?
The parking lot.
The parking lot? We can give you numbers, yes.
Yeah, because I, you know, I go by there, there's a lot of cars in that parking lot. You park downstairs in the resort, and if you don't remember exactly where you park, it takes you half an hour to find your car at night, you know? But people park across the street, and I see, you know, they have the people crossing back and forth all the time. So I know there's a lot of cars in there. I just don't know how many.
We still are certainly generating revenue out of that lot, and we're going to continue to generate revenue out of that lot. It's just not being utilized.
To its fullest.
Even near to its fullest.
Yeah.
It certainly is on the weekends, again, when the spaces at the resort actually fill up, because they have limited spaces. So there's always going to be a need for that parking lot until they address that issue.
Yeah.
But during the week and during the slower times, we're just not utilized, it's not being utilized nearly to its potential.
If you could, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you, Counsel. We have no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
For back sponsor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Go back to regular business if.
Fifteen.
Please read fifteen on the agenda, please. Item number fifteen, Mr. President, is ordinance offered by Council Richard Delisola Jr., as president. Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Everett, Massachusetts as follows, that the City Council hereby amends the existing short-term rental ordinance. Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just this evening, at public participation, we had some individuals come up and speak on this ordinance. I hate to belabor it, but it is important. I do want to incorporate their comments, so I'm going to ask that we postpone it to the next meeting to give us all an opportunity to review that with their comments fresh in mind.
Seconded on the motion, Counsel McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President. I believe that everything that the two individuals who spoke this evening, who are friends of ours, had talked about was incorporated into that language. And I see Mr. Latanzi in the audience, and I don't know if he can touch briefly on the fact that if it's already implemented in the ordinance, I think it's ready to go. But I believe that what they had requested, because they have been working closely with our Assistant City Clerk, Mr. Ragucci, I think those things were already implemented into the ordinance. So if Mr. Latanzi, if we could make a motion and invite up Mr. Latanzi.
Good evening, everyone. Matthew Latanzi, Assistant City Solicitor.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
Latanzi, thank you. I appreciate your appearance. Can you just briefly touch on the fact that a couple of the issues that were discussed this evening in public participation, it's something that I know you've heard, because I know you've worked with Mr. Ragucci and others on this ordinance? If somebody has the comment from public participation, I'm sorry, drew a blank. One is that the owner has to live in the property twelve months out of the year, has to consistently live in the property, as did main dwelling unit. That was one of them. And there was a second one, I'm sorry.
Counsel Capone.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I think the other one was that they wanted to.
You want to yield the floor to Counsel Capone? I yield the floor.
I believe the other comment was to restrict it to commercial zoned areas only and not have it go into residential areas. Is that in that ordinance as it's written?
No.
That's what I thought. That's why I wanted to postpone it for another meeting, but thank you.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Having the floor, that I was respectfully, unless anybody else has a question for Mr. Latanzi, I would respectfully excuse with customary thanks, and table this for two weeks if that language isn't in there.
I get three speakers unless they want to yield. I get Counsel Florio, Counsel Capone, and Counsel Matusky. Counsel.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Counsel, in regards, I know exactly what these folks have gone through, and I understand that, obviously, what they have gone through is a lot of noise ordinance and a lot of problems, why they would want into a commercial area. I don't know if we can really limit it to a commercial area by law. So I know inside the ordinance, it does say that the owner has to live there or a property manager has to live there, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, for nine out of the twelve months of the year, is how we determine primary residence or owner occupied. The definition, or you would have to be an owner occupied or a primary residence in order to attain a short-term rental license. And again, this is, so what, one of the many amendments between the original and what's before the body today, is that that is a minimum threshold now. That is no longer determinative of it being your primary residence, just because you can prove you lived there nine out of twelve months. Now, instead of simply going to the city clerk's office and saying, I checked every box in the ordinance, you have to give it to me now. It's now a licensing board authority. Licensing board being a public body, they, every applicant will have to notify their abutters of one hundred and fifty feet prior to the meeting. Those abutters have a chance to now speak on it, either on their behalf or opposed, and then the licensing board has the ultimate discretion to make this determination. So again, that nine out of twelve months is simply a minimum threshold to even get in the door. If you can prove nine out of twelve, even twelve out of twelve, that still does not, it's not an automatic.
Okay, because what I'm afraid is if we don't move on this fast, there's more and more people opening these Airbnb's, and we have no control over them. We just, we have nothing on the books. Is that correct?
If I may, we do actually have something on the books. What is on the books, however, is a far more lax, lenient law than what's before you.
Okay, so if I open an Airbnb today, before you put this ordinance into effect, am I grandfathered in?
You are not.
You're not. So they still have to follow our rules.
And the reason why you're not grandfathered in is simply because no one actually has a license. There have been plenty of people who have come to the clerk's office and said, I would love to apply for one. They have, there has yet to be a single license actually granted.
Okay, so in that case, then, what are we doing to the people that are, we had two people up here, one with a complaint that there's a problem, and one saying that he's running an Airbnb on One Broadway. So what are we doing about it?
So whenever we get complaints, you know, they funnel to the proper channels. Oftentimes, ISD is the one who receives the complaints. They go and they assess the property and see, you know, if they are truly running an Airbnb. There are fines built in to the ordinance, ranging from a hundred to three hundred dollars per violation per day. So those fines can rack up pretty heavily. You know, and like you said, there are ones that are operating already. We are simply trying to both promote the good ones, but also be able to regulate.
There are a lot of good ones, there's a lot of good ones that don't have problems, but the ones that are good are the ones the landlords live there. Okay, if the landlord doesn't live there, they don't care. That's the bottom line. They can relax in Linfield, they can relax in Marblehead, and they don't care about their neighbors over here. So to me, if you're not owner occupied and you're renting a house, you don't have one, period. You have to be owner occupied of that house. We have to become strict about it.
So on the topic of strict, and I can't weigh in on the policy of whether or not owner occupied should be twelve months, that's not my job. But one portion of this ordinance that, you know, was a little bit more lenient, that is now in front of you as amended to be a little more strict, the designation of a problem property. So if something is designated as a problem property, their license, if given, is stripped, or if they've never gotten a license yet, they are precluded from being able to attain a license. And how it, excuse me, was originally written was that if it was, if the city received a total of three or more complaints for a bunch of different designations, fire complaints, police complaints, ISD, noise, now it's a combination. So if it's two ISD, because the neighbor says it's too loud here, and then one police that results in any type of charge, you're now a problem property. And, you know, why, why would the landlord care if he's not even living there, it's not his house? There's a significant amount of money that has to go in to both get the license and to become compliant to even get the license. So to get into the compliance, oftentimes, people have to do a significant amount of work in their house, which, I mean, that's money-backed investment right there. And then to apply for the license, to renew that license, that's more money every time. So, you know, again, policy.
But you're saying people aren't even coming up for the licenses. So what do we do with those people? You shutting them down? You're not throwing people out, you shut them down.
Yeah, so ISD has, you know, procedures in play where they fine, they order a cease and desist, they tell them to stop doing it. I know one issue is if we're not hearing complaints, Airbnb and the other sites don't necessarily say, you know, X number on Main Street, they'll just say Airbnb, two-bedroom Main Street. So we can't really go in there just seeing it on the website. If we receive a complaint, though, the proper people do respond to it.
Okay.
And one, one of the biggest issues of why nothing, why no one has gotten a license isn't because they're.
Because we didn't have one.
No, 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 we do have an ordinance. We do have an ordinance. That ordinance is enforceable to an extent. And again, it's not because these places are so shoddy that we would never give them a license. It really, or the issue lies in the fact that we don't have anything in our zoning that speaks to short-term rentals. So as such, in this ordinance, this is kind of a two-parter. It's amending this ordinance in a few ways, and I can just list out the amendments. And then it's also the creation of a new zoning ordinance. So this new zoning ordinance, it's Section Thirty-four, just called Short-Term Rentals. It's a two-page, really small, just having to do with short-term rentals. So instead of opening up each zoning, the residential, the commercial, and amending it to add short-term rental language, we created a new one that will apply to all proceeding.
I don't understand why this has taken so long. I put this on the agenda over a year ago. I saw this coming, okay? I just don't understand why we don't have something a year later. So, thank you. Question. Obviously, this is not your fault, and I don't mean to take it out with you, but if we lay this on, postpone this for another two weeks, it's not an issue, is that correct? Or should we just get it done and then always amend it?
So I know that the planning board, the planning board has set up a special meeting in anticipation of either an approval or a recommendation, so that they can look over the zoning and then recommend that to the body, because these two do go hand in hand. One can't be enforced without the other. And then we run into the fear of if this isn't all tidied up, you know, all, both ordinances fully tidied up, passed, ordained before the new council comes in, then we have to restart. So, I mean, if you're speaking of it's been a year, it's going to be longer, the more you postpone. Sure do.
To me, you know, let's pass it tonight and then have the ability to change it in the future. At least we have something.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Counsel Matusky, and Counsel Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. What board of licensing would be licensed? Is it the?
The licensing board.
The liquor board?
The licensing board does give out liquor licenses, but they have a few other authorities as well.
So they would be responsible for this, too?
Yes.
And right now, nobody has a license, so.
Correct.
But once it's in place, how do you notify the people that have been running these places?
So again, that will go back to the ISD or complaints we'll hear, and then they.
Because it could be one next to my house, and I don't even know it. Now, on the agenda here, item number forty-six, I mean, forty-eight, we have a family that lives next door, they're here on the issue, you know the issue, Nickel Street. It's been a nightmare for these people. On the other hand, you had a gentleman over here that runs a nice business, no problems. Would the licensing board be notified that One-Ninety-One Nickel Street has caused an issue in this council chamber and to the neighbors?
Yeah, they absolutely can. And one of the reasons why we would like to move it, or that, you know, we propose to move it from the city clerk to a public body, being the licensing board, is that now any dissenter or anyone in support can actually go in front and plead their case. They can say, I, my neighbor does this, and I think it's great. They're quiet, and everyone's doing great. Or I have a shared driveway, and I, it's loud, it's obnoxious, I don't want it. Now they actually have their day to go say that to the proper authority.
Right, it has to be run correctly. You know, I think I brought it up at a few meetings ago. There was a family that rented a unit, an apartment, on Tyleson Street. What are you referring to, these Bed and Breakfast?
They're referred, it's short-term rental, Airbnb is the most common.
Where does the airport come in? I don't get it.
That's a company name.
Oh, that's the company.
Yeah. Xerox being a copy.
I thought it was something to do with airport or something. Okay, so Airbnb, okay, you know, I'm living in a time warp here, but this family was left in the middle of Tyleson Street, two children, a husband and wife, and they ring the doorbell, and people say, who are you? You know, this is our apartment. We had a, you know, think, there's a little hostel up the street, and the police dropped them off there. But, you know, this is a true story, these things are happening. And then you got the horror show on Nickel Street. But, you know, as far as it being in a business district, you know, just my opinion, Mr. President, you know, I think everybody should have the, if you have a two-family house, you don't want a long-term tenant, say. You want to rent it out for a week or two, whatever it is. I think, you know, it shouldn't be restricted. That's just my feeling on that. But I want to thank you, Counselor Latanzi, for the work you're putting into this. This is something new, you know, to the community, you know, maybe I'm a little old-fashioned, but, you know, this is all new to me. But I have received phone calls. As a matter of fact, I got a phone call last night from somebody asking me, I told him to look up the Everett Advocate, I think that's what the legal advertisement was?
Mm.
And this, you know, maybe that could answer their questions. And this, you know, maybe that could answer their questions, but, you know, this is, uh, going to create a lot of work for that licensing board. You know, there's, I don't know, 30 liquor licenses in the city, and, you know, they've got their hands full with what they do. And, uh, I just hope they're prepared for, you know, I don't know how many people are going to be applying for these, but there should be a fine in place for those who don't file for the, uh, for the lease. You see what I mean?
Yep, and, and there is a, a fine in place for that.
And they should be disqualified for a period of time because they did not get the proper paperwork. When you said there's a lot of money involved in the, uh, process, how much is the, the license for, is it a yearly thing?
It's a yearly thing, and it has to be, uh, approved every year. Uh, it's, I believe, and I'm going to find it, but just off the top of my head, I think it's $300 for the application itself. Uh, it's another 300 to reapply annually, uh, and then the penalties are really where the money will come in as well. Uh, it's $300 per violation per day, uh, or, I'm sorry, it's 100 for the violations, it's 300 for any time that you're renting out your apartment or your house without a license. So, if you do that, that's $300 per violation. Uh, so those will rack up, and then the other investment back, uh...
What other costs would be involved? It's, they...
So, oftentimes, you know, to bring it up to full code compliance with our ordinance, uh, so that ISD feels that it's good enough to rent out to short-term rentals...
So, the ISD would actually give you an occupancy thing for this, uh, permit, rather, for the...
They, they would give, um, of the many boxes that have to be checked, that's one of them, that ISD gives approval, the building gives approval, uh, stuff like that, so that we know a little bit about the building before it goes to licensing board.
Okay, well, it seems like you have, uh, it under control. It's something new to me, anyway, I know the other councilmen might know more than I do on this issue, but my experience from the people on Nickel Street is not a positive one. So, I'm going to keep an eye on this, uh, issue. I know we have it on the agenda, the attorney here, Slattery, is here to update us. That party, whoever's been renting that out, should be disqualified for the nightmares they've given to that neighborhood, but I'll, I'll bring that up to the licensing board at the time. But there are good people and bad people in every business, so you're going to run into that. You know, and I think people, uh, rather than have a long-term tenant, would prefer renting it out for a month or something like that. That's just my feeling, but I want to thank you, Attorney Latanzi, you do a wonderful job on this matter.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Polatino, then Councilor Florio, I mean, uh, Piero.
Thank you. I actually don't have any, uh, questions for, uh, Attorney Latanzi. I mean, I'm looking at the, uh, at the enrolled ordinance. I mean, the, the residents from Nickel Street bring up a good point about, um, they think that the, uh, owner should be, live there 12, 12 months of the year. Whether it's the owner or, or a property manager, there does need to be, in my opinion, uh, 12-month supervision of the property. You've got to have somebody when there's a problem with, you know, we're talking about problem tenants, well, what happens when the tenants have a problem? Who do they go to? And the owner is in Danby's, you know, Portland, Maine, whatever, you know? Uh, there needs to be somebody there accountable, and that, that would be my, um, I will make a motion to change that to 12 months of either owner or property manager, whatever the proper language should be, uh, because I think it's accountable, it, it is important. You know, um, the fines here, the, the penalties, that's great, as long as it, they're reported. But I know, you know, some of us have been doing this for a while, we know that there are issues that sometimes arise where the neighbors just give up. They don't call it anymore, they've had enough. And I'm not, I'm not saying that as a reflection of our, of our, uh, enforcement of our laws, but, um, you know, I'm sure there are times where it's very frustrating, uh, and, um, you know, you almost know ahead of time what the end result's going to be when you place a call. Uh, I've heard that story dozens and dozens of times over the last 20 years, been doing this. So, um, I think it's important that we, that this is enforceable, I believe it is, but I think it needs to be a little tighter on the accountability. The owner or, or, or their designee, designated, what's the right word? Designated individual needs to be there. So, the resident, the tenant, whoever the renter is, it's short-term, they may only be there a couple of days, might be there a week, but they have somebody that they can address. If that's the cost of, of doing business, that's the cost of doing business. That's how I feel.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor, uh, DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. Latanzi.
Good evening.
Um, my question is, I'm not so sure it could be done because you're dealing with corporations that aren't based here, but is there a way to possibly work with some of these short-term rental companies to prohibit a property from being posted without a license, requiring some kind of verification process before it gets posted to the site itself?
So, it, it's a tough thing to do, uh, again, the private business kind of thing. It's, I, I'm pretty sure that they don't really screen enough to say, you know, the city of Everett has to give a sign-off for each property before it goes on their website. We can try, uh, my gut feeling is saying that it probably won't work, but I'll look into it.
Okay. You know, my, my thing is, we, we've been beating this ordinance back and forth for weeks, let, let's pass something, and we can change it if need be, but let's get something on the books, uh, and I'm not sure how much that'll even work. The clerk sent out letters over the last year, has required, uh, operators to come in, no one's responded, no one's coming in. So, we're shooting off a lot of hard air here tonight, but what are we accomplishing? Is it actually going to solve any problems? I have one across the street from me that's taking up all the parking in the neighborhood, already tightly congested neighborhood, and nothing seems to be done about it. Um, so at the very least, let's pass something and get it on the books instead of waiting any longer. We can make the changes any day we want. Let's pass this ordinance now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions for our guest? Thank you very much.
Yep.
Councilor Florio.
I don't have any further questions, but that was my thing, let's pass it. It's been in committee four times. We've sat in committee, we've pulled it apart, get it going, like Councilor DePiero said, and I've said that before, pass it. We can always fix things. We are the city councils, and we can change things. So, get something on the books, and then if we have to change it, we change it.
Thank you. Councilor Polatino.
Good. Um, first of all, I'd like to make an amendment. I'd like to amend this from, uh, uh...
Nine months to 12?
Nine, nine to 12 months to 12 months.
Secondedate, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, go from nine to 12. Councilor Matusky, on the motion.
We're requiring the person to live in the property 12 months a year?
The owner.
So, if you have a two-family, he's got to live in one of the units?
Or a man who lives in it, yes.
Or somebody responsible?
Correct.
That doesn't live in the property? That's reasonable, I, you know, because my way of thinking, if somebody goes to Florida for three months a year, they want to get some money for their house. You know, they do that in Florida all the time, so that kind of makes sense, especially we have this resort here that just was built for $3 billion. Okay, so I might, I, I think I might be in favor of that, but it's, you know, but if somebody responsible will be on the license, okay.
Go ahead.
Favorable action as amended?
Second.
Secondedate? Roll call vote.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hamlin?
Yes.
Councilor Markhazy?
Yes.
Councilor Matusky?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor Polatino?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
President Delasola?
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, you have passed.
When you are ready, can you read number 16 on the agenda?
Item number 16, Mr. President, is an ordinance offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Jr., his president. The cit, whereas the city is silent in regards to short-term rentals, in section 12 of the zoning ordinance, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Everett, Massachusetts, as follows, in accordance with the provisions of section 12 of the zoning ordinances of the city of Everett, the city council hereby amends the zoning ordinances as follows.
Just the one we wanted to lay out. Councilor Capone?
My, my understanding is that there was a request that this item be postponed until December, so the first meeting in December.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. We're going to 39, if I'm correct?
Item number 39, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Michael J. McGlaughlin that the city engineer appear at the next government operations, public safety, public service committee meeting to discuss the property damage at 118 Elm Street due to tree roots from the city pushing into its property.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. President, I have a question for you on this, actually. We amended this, and I see another piece on this calendar tonight that we have amended and added other councilors' names on them, but they, they don't seem to get reflected on a regular basis.
So, you're not even should be attached to this council because you've been working on this, I want to just know to allude to that, that you have also been a part of this piece.
That being said, do we have any communication from DPW or from the city engineer's office regarding this item?
I don't see it here in front of me, unless the clerk has it.
I do not have anything at this time.
Okay, so I'm going to ask to lay this on table for two weeks, I'm going to ask that we have our city engineer slash DPW director, Mr. St. Louis, appear before us in two weeks from now. This has been on for over a month. This, uh, property owner has significant damage, as you know, Councilor President Delasola, to his home because of the tree that, that's the property of the, the lot that's on the school where the EHS Crimson Tide bush, bushery is, uh, that tree stump has caused major damage to this individual's home, his wall, retain a wall. Um, we've asked for it to be repaired, and, and I'm not sure where we stand with it, so I'm asking that Mr. St. Louis appear in one month from now to give us an update of why this has not been repaired and how we get this repaired for this property owner that is rightfully due, due to that tree stump.
Thank you. Councilor DeFlorio?
Are these people getting invited? They are, the... Well, maybe a simple phone call, ask them why they're not showing up, uh, refer it to public safety, and have them come with public safety.
No, I, I'd like to have this to St. Louis here in two weeks, it's been over a month that we've had this on the calendar going back and forth, I think it's been six weeks ago, six, that we asked for it to go on.
Councilor, I think we have, I think we have public safety in two days?
Two days, I think you have a meeting.
Not in two weeks. If you want to throw it on there, that's, it's your pleasure.
I don't know if we have time to put it on the agenda in 48 hours from now.
We could refer it to public safety and invite the same, you cannot, John? Okay. Well, it's going to go on the next meeting.
So, then I want to have Mr. St. Louis appear in two weeks from now to discuss this item with us, please.
Secondedate, all in favor of next meeting?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, Councilor. Look, you're ready, can you read number 40, please?
Item number 40, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Michael J. McGlaughlin that Director of Community Development provide an update on the status of Rosetti Park on Tremont Street, and if there are future plans for this park.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, I, I cannot believe that I'm even discussing this still. It's been all summer, though, I've asked for about a dozen vehicles to be removed off of Rosetti Park. They used the lot as a parking dumping ground, basically, on Tremont Street, the bottom of Prescott Street. One day, when we had the ribbon cutting ceremony, the last Saturday, or, yeah, last Saturday, they removed everything, it looked phenomenal. I, I don't, yeah, maybe this still doesn't come up, but...
Sorry, Mr. De...
Councilor McGlaughlin?
You have to get invited up.
Yeah.
According to our rules, so...
Yeah. Councilor, you want to...
So, Mr. President, I would like to invite up, uh, Mr. Souza, because he was the one that gave me his word, his commitment, that this lot would be emptied, and it was emptied for one day. All the vehicles were removed off of it during the ceremony of the ribbon cutting of the park, and I returned home from vacation on Sunday and found the lot full again of vehicles. It was like Houdini, it was all over again.
But you want to invite him up?
So, I'd like to invite up Mr. Souza to...
Can we also invite up Chief of Staff?
I don't think he needs to be here, I don't, he doesn't have any...
It, it's your piece, you have the floor, Councilor.
Okay.
All in favor? Ayes have it. You state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Tony Souza, Director of Planning Development. Which item is this?
Number 40, Mr. Souza.
Tremont Street.
Regarding the, the lot on Tremont Street. So, the residents were really ecstatic on Saturday when they saw the cars that were unregistered being towed off the lot, they saw the lot being emptied out, as you had said, they were really appreciative of it. But then again, less than a week later, the lot is full again of vehicles. I'm not positive if it's all ISD vehicles, but it was full of vehicles the other night when I drove by it on, on Sunday evening. You had assured me that all the vehicles would be removed off that lot prior to start of construction of, of the park, and I don't know where we stand with it, so I'm trying to figure out, sure, why, why these vehicles are back on this lot again prior to construction of the park, which we've talked about numerous times.
Sure, so, so a couple of things. Uh, with respect to the vehicles that were placed there, it's only temporary, um, those, we are working, um, on relocating those vehicles to another lot, um, in the city.
But Mr. Souza, all due respect, it's been temporary since, like, May, or, or, or the beginning of the spring. Well, I mean, you and I have spoken about this for months on end, I mean, this isn't the last 15 days or 30 days or 60 days.
And, and with respect to, you know, the limited spaces and, and the amount of inventory we have, um, we are working on relocating those vehicles. So, and we will be relocating those vehicles to another lot, um, in the city.
But I just don't understand how hard it is, I'm not going to delaborate this any longer, I just don't understand how hard it is...
It's not hard.
... to move these vehicles. If, if this lot was in front of any one of our homes, we would be very upset by it, let's be truthful with each other, okay?
If I may, we, we removed the abandoned vehicles, the unregistered vehicles...
You did, absolutely, I gave credit, absolutely.
We cleaned up the site, and we are working on the logistics of moving it to another lot. Um, we're looking, for example, down at Lower Broadway, moving it down there so it's out of sight and, and contained down there.
Although, I'm sorry.
With, well, with respect to Rosetti Park as well, um, I wasn't prepared to talk about the park designs itself, because this, this item on the 25th, I'm sorry, on the October 15th, was referred to November 25th, so my apologies there, I was not prepared to call a little up guard on that, um, but I'd be happy on the 25th to talk more about Rosetti Park.
Totally fine, absolutely, no problem.
With respect to that, too, I can have a firmer update with, with respect to the ISD vehicles. Um, as this council recalls, um, we had the vehicles temporarily located down at the municipal lot behind the post office, and that was not desired by, by the council. Um, as I understand, it was not desirable here on the adjacent streets, um, this item has been, has been brought up in the past. So, we're certainly with the limited amount of space we have, we're doing, certainly the best we can, and we do take responsibility, and that's why we cleaned up the, the site and got rid of the abandoned vehicles.
But two thoughts I'm going to give to you, I'm going to end this. We have, we've just talked in this, today about how the lot on Lower Broadway is underutilized on Lower Broadway.
It's just an example, Councilor.
And, and no, no, what I'm saying is the one across from Encore, how that's underutilized and how that we have so much space in that lot. Why aren't we taking 20 veh, spots in that lot?
That's, that's exactly what we're looking into, Councilor.
Or the one be, behind Air Force Road.
That's, that's what I just said, so that's what we're looking into.
But how hard is it to look in? I mean, Mr., I'm not trying, I, I just don't understand how hard it is to look in, don't look, and it's not really you, but don't look into it, just move the vehicles, get them out of neighbors, in front of neighbors' homes, because none of us would be happy to have 20 ISD vehicles in front of my house every day, to be quite frank with you. It's, it's just, it's not acceptable, and it's not been a short-term issue. This has been going on for months on top of months, and it's not acceptable, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilor. I have one more, I have, oh, no more questions for our guest? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, what's your...
Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion that we table this until November 25th, and Mr. Souza can come back and discuss further in detail the Rosetti Park update, and also, hopefully, by that point, these vehicles, once and for all, will be removed off of this lot.
On the motion...
On that motion and on the motion, Mr. DePiero?
On the motion?
Uh, you know, I've discussed this many a times with Council McGlaughlin and Council Simonelli in government operations. You know, the vehicles were here, they were on the surrounding streets, this council had a problem with it. The vehicles were then taken home, this council had a problem with it. They're down the park, uh, Norwood Street Parking Lot, this council had a problem with it. You can't have your cake and eat it, too. this council had a problem with it. You can't have your cake and eat it too. I mean, what do you want these people to do with the vehicles? You know, I don't know. But if they get moved, they get moved. It's just, can't seem to make anybody happy here, that's all.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, your pleasure, you want to hold it for the meeting on the 25th? On the motion, Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are we going to be discussing all this on what's happened with Rosetti Park on this floor on the 25th?
Well, I look at it pieces, either we're, Counsel McLaughlin clicked me from wrong, is the plan, well, you want to know what the plan's, what's going to go with the park to make it another park, or is your concern just to get rid of the cars?
So it's actually a two...
The park is a different, separate subject.
It's a twofold, Mr. President. One is, and it kind of leads into one and to the other, because they can't have their cars on the lot when they start construction of the park. So that was the reason why we were looking at when the construction of the park was going to stop, because then the vehicles would expedite at that point. That being said, that was early on in May when we started to talk about this, but then they continuously used that lot to dump additional unregistered vehicles. They continued to dump more and more stuff. It wasn't just the ISD vehicles that were on the lot, that this became a snowball effect. And so that's how it kind of escalated into a twofold, one being the vehicles, and then the other part is the construction of the park itself.
So on the piece for the 25th, you want to change anything on this to, about the vehicles? Because right now, there's nothing on here about the vehicles.
So, very...
We shouldn't have been talking about the vehicles, period, because there's nothing on it. So my point is, I already had the floor, I'm sorry, I had the floor, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, I had the floor.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Okay, thank you. So the point is, we just spoke in a half hour on something that's not on the agenda, number one. Number two, they're coming back on the 25th. I asked the question, to discuss what? This Rosetti Park? Because I'm not going to spend another hour listening to this. It should be in committee.
This is what I'm asking him right now.
These things should be in committee, okay? But the point is, we shouldn't even be talking about the cars. It's not on the agenda. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McLaughlin.
The motion is to send this to committee where it belongs.
Excuse me, Counsel's piece.
Thank you, Counsel DeFlorio, but it's my item. Thank you for your recommendation. Mr. President, that being said, I will respectfully disagree with Counsel DeFlorio. This started out because I asked for an update of status of Rosetti Park. This vehicles is a status update of Rosetti Park. These vehicles are parked on Rosetti Park. Mr. President, on the motion, I would respectfully ask that it be held over till November 25th meeting for Mr. Souza to come up and give us an update on Rosetti Park, as it reads.
Okay, on that motion, Counsel Napolitano, who has the floor?
All right, let's, let's just talk parliamentary procedure. You can have more than one motion. The sponsor of a piece does not control the action of that motion exclusively. Okay, so now we have two motions.
Two motions.
We have a motion before us to hold it until the next meeting.
Yep.
And we also have a motion to send it to committee.
Committee.
Now, I'm going to say, call for the question and let's move on. It's now 10 after 10. I have no problem with being here as long as we have to be here, but we still have 12 more items which are going to take us here at least another hour.
That's right.
And what are we truly accomplishing? So I'm calling for the question because I have the floor. I can do that.
That's right.
Thank you.
Committee goes first.
That's correct, just so people know, the committee takes precedence over postponing it. So to send it to committee, Counsel Capone. Counsel DeFlorio. Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Handlin.
No.
Counsel Marquezey. Counsel Matuski. Counsel McKinnon. Counsel McLaughlin.
No.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli, President Del Solo.
Yes.
Foyers, Fornes, failed. To the next motion, it's Counsel McLaughlin's to lay it over, to postpone it to the November 25th meeting. Counsel Capone.
Gentlemen, the meeting's is long. It isn't from this one piece. It's from 7:00 to now. Voice vote for the 25th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. 25th meeting.
Item number 41, Mr. President, is an order offered by Counsel Richard J. Del Solo as President that the Everett City Council hereby approves the addition of a new subsection to the Administrative Code, Section 3, Multiple Member Bodies, Food Ballis, excuse me, Food Policy Council. And just so you know, I spoke with Rena from the, from the Health Office downstairs, and she explained to me that there are two other people, Kathleen O'Brien and I forget who other, or one other lady that wanted to speak on this, was not available. Also, as I explained to Counsel Capone, I just got recently, right before the meeting started, it was 24 pages of, I guess, an in-depth thing of the policy itself, which I'll be forwarding to each and one of yous tomorrow. So I just want to let you know that.
Did they want to through...
So postponed, they asked to postpone it to the next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Next meeting. Read 42, please.
Item number 42, Mr. President, is an ordinance offered by Counsel Richard J. Del Solo as President. We ordained that the City Council, the City Council of Everett Massachusetts as follows, that the Everett City Council hereby approves a small wireless facility ordinance.
Counsel Capone.
President, I just have a couple of comments on this, and then membership can do what they want with it. A couple of little things I looked at with some of the amendments. For example, in Section 4-62, it's on the second page, it's paragraph 10. One of the amendments was to reduce the neighbors that would need to be notified from 300 to 100, and I don't think that's enough. I would want to increase that to 200. If antenna was going within 150 feet of my house and I didn't know about it for that, I think everyone should be notified, have an opportunity to say how they feel about it. So, I'm going to be making a number of recommendations. That's one that I'd be looking to amend. Then, there's another one. It's Section 463. It basically is taking the process we've been doing now as having a public hearing, and it's removing the public hearing process of it and just leaving it up to the council to decide. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with that in theory, but I do think that we should give people as much of an opportunity to weigh in on things that are going to affect their property, their neighborhood. So I would be recommending that we keep the public hearing portion in the ordinance. And then, in that same section down in Subpart C, I would want to add another little paragraph. It says, "Why the city can deny," and there's different steps. One thing I'd want to add at the very end is, "Or if it's determined that it impairs the quality of life and safety of the city's residents." Might be vague, if it is, it'll get stricken out, but I'd like to give us a little bit more teeth if we could. And then, the only other one is in Section 4-64. It talks about the annual recurring rate. Now, in the contract, we just approved this 270 per year per unit. In this one, it doesn't say anything about the per units. Just to be consistent, I want to be able to say that if you're going to have one of these cellular antennas, it's going to cost you 270 per unit per year. So those would be the recommendations that I'd be making.
So there's four total, Counselor?
Yeah, there's the increasing of the, of the distance for notification. There is keeping it as a public hearing, adding that language about giving us another avenue in the event that we don't want to permit one, and then ensuring that we're very clear that it's 270 per year per unit.
We take it all, four collectively, or we do one at a time?
However the body wants to take it. I mean, unless there's any opposition to it, I'd say take them collectively.
So favorable action on this amended?
Yeah, well, first the amendments.
I mean, sorry, amendments, sorry. So, on, on the amendments, proposed by Counsel Capone.
We do all in favor?
Yeah, you could do, you could do a voice...
All in favor of the four amendments?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have them?
Favorable action as amended.
Counsel.
Counsel Handlin? Second, it's postponed? No. All in favor to postpone it?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Till next meeting, correct?
Item number 43, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Richard Del Solo Jr. and Counsel Anthony DePiero that the city monitor construction on all our streets and sidewalks to ensure that all companies that are doing the work are following protocol.
Counsel Del Solo?
Thank you very much. Most of the issues seem to be with utilities going to Everett, mostly the gas work. We have a lot coming ahead of us here, and I think we have to nip it in the butt now before, especially, I think it's 2021, is when Ferry Street's going to be reconstructed from Route 16 all the way to Malden. So I think we have to nip it in the butt now. I've just seen a lot of issues they've had, leaving equipment overnight, taking out parking spots, even things like leaving the cones and the men working signs overnight on the corner of the streets. I see it every day. I have one job near my house, and they just leave the signs up there on the crosswalks, kids are walking by, and it's, it's not a safe thing to have. So I think if it's the city, if it's ISD, somebody, somebody has to keep an eye on them, I think, from now until going into the future. If you have like a utility supervisor, other cities have it. Cambridge, Somerville, they watch us like a hawk, whatever we do. There's plates in the road, if they're not paved. There's a lot going on in this city reconstruction-wise, and I think somebody has to be watching over them. Not just someone from ISD to watch them, but they don't know the utility work itself. So I think we have to get together on this now and going into next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel McLaughlin.
Thanks, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman. I could not agree more with President Del Solo. I think that we need to have accountability from somebody in the administration that is going to oversee the construction. We have so much happening on our streets in the city of Everett. You can't really blame the contractor when the contractor is not being told from somebody within the administration of what we expect as a city. It's our rules and regulations that they should be working abide and abide. So we should have somebody that is looking out for our interest. And clearly, we do not at this point, because there is like Wild Wild West out there. Counsel Del Solo is right, cones and signs, and it continues, could go on and on about what is being left on streets and on sidewalks and everywhere else. And it's not the contractor's fault, because if the contractor is not being told, "This is what we expect from you," then they think that it's okay to do what they see fit and most reasonable to do their job. But if we have somebody that is saying, "These are the expectations of the city and the administration," then this is what you have to live by while you work in our community. Like Counsel Del Solo just said, in Somerville and Cambridge, they have a utility supervisor that is out there looking out for the best interest of the city. We clearly do not have any control over the construction of the city, and they're doing whatever they so choose. So I absolutely support Counsel Del Solo on this item, and think we need to get this under control sooner than later. Thank you.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes, I too agree. You know, I don't know if it's me, but these crosswalks that are being done over in the city, for instance, on Wynden Street, there is nothing to indicate that there's a three-inch drop. I mean, it just, the pavement, I don't know what's going on. Maybe it's just too much happening. But you got sunken pavement, people doing work after a street that's just been repaired. I think maybe it's time, we do need a utility supervisor here. You know, the police can only do so much with the movement of traffic, and they do a good job, but, you know, they're up here every week now, all these utility companies. And I think that Councilman Del Solo is right. We need, we need somebody to coordinate the efforts. I don't know if there's somebody maybe within the City Works Department or the City Engineering Department, but somebody has to pay attention, more than they're doing now. And they're doing too much in, in certain locations. You can't take a, I said two weeks ago, it took me a half an hour from Everett Square to McKinnon's. I mean, come on. It's only a quarter a mile. And I said, everywhere I went, I don't know if I had the, you know, bad omen that day, but I just, everywhere, I took a right, I couldn't go that way, I went down Main Street, I tried the long way and it didn't work. But anyway, we need some help here with, with these utility companies and all the construction work. It's nice to see improvements, but it's got to be coordinated better. The sidewalk, the crosswalk thing, I'm a hundred percent in favor of new crosswalks, they, Election Day, it was, you should have saw the mess out there. Oh my, and the people's response and cars, oh, it was terrible. Whoever dreamed that one up? Oh, and then they repaved them in, and they're temporary, I would imagine, but what genius figured that one out? That should have never been allowed. You saw it, it was a mess. A guy, I had a rusted back of his truck, half the truck fell out. I mean, come on. Yeah, it happened, Mike Marquez, he was there, he said, "Look at that." But I mean, you've got to have a little decency here and common sense. I was in the construction business, by the way, years ago, you know, and we had people watching us every move we made. You know, there's clerk of the works, there's all this stuff, you know, built in to make sure things are done correctly. There just doesn't seem to be that way anymore. I don't know what happened. But I agree with Councilman Del Solo. It's time that we take a proactive stance to these utility companies and pay attention, like you said, on Ferry Street down there, that white end. I got a friend that lives on Belmont Street, just bought a house, he's, he says he can't even get out of his driveway. It's a mess over there. Another guy, there's no way to park for the next month, he says to me. I said, "Well, you, I live on the other end of Everett, but you can use my yacht." I mean, come on. It's a big deal now. So, you know, something has to be done. Maybe if the mayor's watching this program, maybe he, he might have a utility supervisor, somebody designated to follow each and every project. Thank you.
Counsel Napolitano.
There was a time under the Ruggici administration, when I was on the council, where projects like this had a project manager. It was somebody from the city assigned to make sure that the very concerns that you've raised tonight are addressed. Now, predominantly, this was all during the school construction, but it also was, it also did go over to other projects as well. It's a very simple concept. You have to put somebody in the building department. It doesn't have to be the city engineer. It's not like he hasn't got enough on his plate. He does. But you need to have somebody who's qualified, who's going to check in at each one of these job sites by the end of, close of business to make sure that they're properly secured, they're safe. It also lets, reminds the companies that are doing the work that somebody's watching them. Because these projects, without supervision, somehow end up to go on longer and longer. And if it, and if they don't really go longer, it sure as hell feels that way. You know, we need to get some accountability back in here. We need a watchdog. Call it what you will, utilities, what was it?
Supervisor.
Supervisor, project manager, watchdog. I don't care what it's called. The bottom line is, there needs to be somebody there accountable to make, or rather, I should be somebody there from the city to make sure that these companies are accountable. Because otherwise, the more, the more projects that continue to evolve, as we continue to evolve as a 21st century city, this isn't going to get better. It's going to get worse. Counsel Del Solo brings up a good point about the project in Ferry Street. That's going to be a massively large-scale project that's going to affect every single person in the city. Don't tell me you're not going to go down Main Street and avoid it. You're not. It's going to affect everybody. But it's essential. It has to be done. And for the residents that don't, aren't aware, what we're talking about is, we're talking about a major redevelopment of Ferry Street that's going to include gas, water, electric, sewer, everything that has to be done, because it's overdue. But you need to have somebody in place. Call it what you will, you know, I'm going to tell you right now, this, because we can't put on the agenda, but the next meeting, I will have a resolution to send to the administration requesting just that point. I invite anybody in this room to join me on it. I'm not doing it for me. I'm doing it because I think that's the direction we need to go. We can complain all we want and hope, and hope that they take the cues, or we can send the request of exactly what we want and have the conversation. That's really all I got to say. Counsel Handlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think all of you were here about four years ago or five years ago when I put that, this exact same resolution on the calendar, and it was for Ferry Street. And if you remember, Ferry Street was all being dug up, but they did the electric, and then I think they did the gas service or something, water or something. And we asked for this, we asked for this to happen. We asked for them to take care of the vehicles that were parked at Glendale Park for months and months at a time, all along Ferry Street. And the answer that we got... And the answer that we got back was that it would cost an additional amount of money for the contractors, because they would have to truck those vehicles out every single night. And I said, "I didn't care," but that's exactly what happened, and someone did, because they never moved those vehicles until the job was done. So then when a company comes in and they bid on a job, they have to bid to take their equipment home at night. I mean, they can't expect to leave it there in the streets of Everett. So, I mean, whoever's making these bids up, whoever's doing them, they should know that we want those vehicles off the street. Now, I understand if they got a thing in the hole, if they can't pull it out, that's okay. But for the most part, leaving a vehicle parked overnight, if you're not going to use it the next day, the very next day, it should be gone. It should go back to their property, wherever they are. So I agree with everybody on whatever we're doing with this thing, but, and, but not only, and I hate to say this, but not only these contractors that come in, but our own workers. I mean, they'll cut down a tree and leave the, not clean it up, I'm not talking about a tree, but let's use that as an example. They don't pick up the leaves or the branches or whatever, maybe they do. But it's got to be everybody that does the work in the city, including ourselves, someone that's got to watch, them too. So it would almost sound like we're asking for a new person, not someone that's existing now, but a new person to be appointed to watch these things, and maybe a person that would have multiple jobs, you know, because when they're not contracting, they could do something else. So I think we should send it to the administration tonight, you know, tell them that this is what we're looking for. We're looking for a monitor, I'm sorry, what number are we on, 43? That we want that monitor be appointed for the jobs that are existing in Everett, not next year, not, but tomorrow, next week. You know, we need that. So I'd make a motion that we send it to the mayor, and tell the mayor that we would like that.
Mr. President?
I'd agree with that.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to send to the mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, read the next item of business, item number 44.
Item number 44, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Rosalind Florio that the police traffic department monitor Glendale Street for commercial vehicles parking on the street overnight all the time.
Did we get any correspondence of that in regards to the parking? I think we wanted to know how many tickets they had given out in this period.
Councilor DeFlorio, we do have something, and it's, it was monitored by the 311 constituent services, and this is some, Mr. Luongo down there, and it's over a period of, it's like a couple of weeks, two weeks. If you want, like I said, I give you copies of it, I mean, like I said, I can read it out to you, but it's pretty lengthy in terms of, but it just says the, Mr. Siano, who's the resident who brought this to Councilor DeFlorio's attention, his issue is that there were several commercial vehicles parked in Glendale Street, he feels that they hindered the visibility when pulling out of the driveways.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk, I don't mean to be rude. I just want to know, how many tickets did they give out? Did they give us, we don't have to read everything. Did they give us an amount?
All in all, not a lot of violations were issued. All these vehicles are in compliance with the ordinance. There was several ones that were monitored, commercial vehicles, at night and overnight shifts, and it breaks it down here, and it says, in conclusion, all in all, not a lot of violations were issued. All these vehicles are in compliance with the ordinance, and it has to.
Okay, so if these vehicles don't have an overnight sticker or Everett sticker, how can they be in compliance?
Because nobody's going down there and looking.
Okay, so this is the bottom line, they're not in compliance. I've gone down these streets, and there's been numerous streets in Everett, not just that street. I did one street, because I didn't want to confuse it, I wanted to put them through the test, okay? People don't have residential stickers on their cars, and there's no placard in the window. So I want to know how they can be in compliance, because from now on, I'm going to start going out there at 12:00 at night, I don't care if I have to go out with my pajamas, and I'm going to start taking pictures of these vehicles myself.
And I'm going to be taking pictures of them.
And if this continues, there's no sense of having parking enforcement, let's get rid of it.
So Councilor Florio, just so you know, so from October 17th to November 7th, it was monitored on, the 18th of October, one commercial vehicle was issued a fraudulent sticker. On October 20th, two residential violations issued and one fraudulent sticker. And then we have to go down to November 5th, one residential violation, November 6th, one residential violation, and then November 7th, everything was back to normal again. And that was the last date that we have here. So it looks like it was monitored for a couple of weeks. So there was only a handful of violations.
Well, it doesn't matter if it's one, two, or three, it doesn't matter. If you're not supposed to be parking there, you're not supposed to be parking there, okay? So, I mean, this takes away parking for the people that have been living here and paying taxes in the city forever or paying rent. You don't have to be just a taxpayer, even in a rental, because most of the owners have a driveway, and they don't let their renters use it. So that's not fair to them, for people to be taking up parking spaces, that's valuable. So I'm going to refer this back to sponsor, I have to think about this. I think we need to monitor more than just one street. This is just one street. So if one street has three or four violations, multiply that, how many streets do we have in the city? Quite a few of them. So multiply that by 300, okay? So I'm not looking to hurt people, but if you're doing something wrong, you're doing something wrong. If you have a commercial vehicle and you can't be out in the street, unfortunately, I'm sorry, you own a business, you can't be out in the street, you have to rent a garage. So I think we have to do a little bit more than just one street. So I'm going to refer it back to sponsor, and I'm going to put it on the agenda a different way, on how things should be monitored, on what I feel, or what we feel should be the right thing. This should be as a...
Maybe, from the chair, would you want to know how many parking clerks are at night compared to day?
I could put that as part, I can ask that question. But if there's an issue, then there needs to put more parking clerks. That's common sense to me, but I know a lot of things don't work on common sense, I'm sorry. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McLaughlin and Councilor Hamlin.
I wholeheartedly agree with Councilor DeFlorio. I know personally, a vehicle that was parked on a street for 11 straight days that did not have a residential sticker, not one ticketed. There was another side of the city that had the same situation for 10 days, not one ticket issued on either of these particular streets that I know of. The fact of the matter is, there are streets, if we go out right now, tonight, any one of us, we can find a dozen violations across the city of Everett easily, I can assure you of that. Then Councilor DeFlorio is right that we need to ask some more specific questions, like how many officers are on during the night, what are their routes, what sections are they traveling, and are they actually getting throughout their whole route, or are they being redirected to other areas to do other tasks during that shift? So I think there's specific questions indeed to be asked, but I know for sure that any one of us can go out tonight and find a dozen violations in any one section of the city that will not be ticketed tonight. Thank you.
Councilor Hamlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, one of the main things we have to do is, we have to describe or identify a commercial vehicle. What is a commercial vehicle? Is it a panel truck that has Joe's paintings on the side of it? No. That's not a commercial vehicle. Does it have commercial plates? Yes, it does. Is it, is it a truck that has dual wheels on the back? That's a commercial vehicle.
Excuse me, Councilor Hamlin has the floor.
So anyway, what I'm saying is that we should go to the police department and say, "Please send us the description of what a commercial vehicle is." And then we can make sure that that description gets sent out to these guys that go out doing the tagging at nighttime, because, you know, anybody can park in the daytime. It's the overnight parking that we're concerned about, that, you know, they take up the parking spaces. And sometimes people will take a truck and put it in their yard, put their car in the street, which is okay, because it's in the yard. But we have to describe a commercial vehicle. We had this trouble years ago, and we kept saying, "Well, that's not a commercial vehicle, but it's got commercial plates, but it's not a commercial vehicle." But then the trucks, trucks don't have commercial plates on them, you know, with the dual wheels on the back, so it's not a commercial vehicle. So we have to have someone come up with a good way to identify exactly what a commercial vehicle is. And I would ask the police department to do that. If not, then we can go to the registry of motor vehicles. So I make that motion to refer it back to, you know, to the sponsor, but also ask the police department to send us a description of what is a commercial vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Florio?
I want to put this on the agenda a different way, and I know it's the end of the year, we have new councils coming, so the first of the year, I don't want things to die out, because this is what happens. We start with something and we don't finish it. So the point I'm trying to say is, we need to correct this problem. So this isn't about show, it's about correcting the problem. So to me, I'm going to refer it back to sponsor, and I like to put it on, not the first month in January, let's give the newcomers, you know, some stability, okay? And then maybe the first meeting in February, I'll put it on again. And I'll put it on a different way.
Seconded.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes have it?
But still refer that to the police department, right? No, and the police department, we got it, the commercial vehicle, what it is.
John, I think, excuse me.
We can't talk in between.
Excuse me, Council from the chair? Council, going back to sponsor, Council Hamlin from the chair, I think you can just go in a regular registry book, it will tell you the difference between commercial and regular vehicles. If you want, I can get that for everybody and print it out. Thank you.
Item number 46, Mr. President, is the resolution offered by Councilor McLaughlin and Councilor Capone that the administration provide an update in regards to the vacant house lot on Summer Street, and if there are any plans to develop this property. Just speaking with the city clerk this morning, I haven't seen it, but he assured me that the lot was cleaned up. I haven't been by there, but as of speaking with the city clerk this morning, he said it was cleaned up, but I haven't seen it. Councilor McLaughlin?
Mr. President, due to the fact that I was out of town last week, we had a neighborhood meeting regarding this item at the Kavirian Room, and I believe a few residents showed up, and I'm not sure if Councilor Capone can allude to it at all, but I'd yield the floor to Councilor Capone if he can help fill me in on some of that.
Councilor Capone?
Thank you. A couple of members from the administration were there, Tony Sousa was there, Attorney Slattery was there, and Chief of Staff Kevin O'Donnell was there. A few residents were there, they raised concerns about what they wanted to see on the property, and the members that were there took in all the information, and it's still a work in progress, so.
So you have, back to sponsor?
Yeah, I'll refer it back to sponsor, re-ask the question in the new year.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes have it, back to sponsor. Clerk, you read 47, please. Item number 47, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Capone that has honored the mayor and the community development, explain in detail the work being conducted at Warner Park, the reasons why, and the projected duration and cost of the project. Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through to our clerk, do we have a correspondence? Tony said that he was going to put something together. He's right here, okay. If we could please have Tony up, Mr. Sousa.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Councilor Capone?
Good evening, Tony Sousa, Director of Planning and Development.
Mr. Sousa, thank you very much for your patience. Not a day goes by, I know we already talked about it real briefly the other day, but not a day goes by where people don't ask me, "How long are the fences going to be up? What exactly is being done? How long is the project?" Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So if you could address what's happening over there, and we'll go from there.
Sure, and thank you. And we did speak last week, and I'd also like to update, discuss and update as well some of the particulars we talked about. So Warner Park, and to answer some of the questions and give the overview here, the contractor is Nellm, Nellm Construction, they're the same contractors that completed Gramstorf Park last year. The contract amount was nine, excuse me, $998, $491. Completion date is spring of next year. The scope of work, series of improvements, without question, it is a very beautiful park prior to, and at completion, the work that will be completed there is new sidewalks, new walkways. Some of the edging along the park was significantly deteriorated over the years, so those will be replaced. We're also adding additional seating areas, bench areas carved out, if you will, in some of the open space, because it is a popular spot for concerts, for community gatherings, neighborhood meetings, and so on. We are adding new lighting retrofits. There's also a series of new trees that will be planted there. Looking at the planting list, again, this morning, we're looking at putting 11 to 12 new trees in there, as well as improvements to the irrigation system. The water fountain itself, if you drive by there, as I'm sure we all have, but there will also be some improvements done to the water fountain, trying to make it more water-efficient, how's that, with what they call a closed system, a recirculation of the water, so that way we can certainly save. The, all of this...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. We don't have that now?
No, no, it's an open system.
So that's just the continuous feed of water?
There is a, forgive me, there is a pump in there.
Yeah.
But there is significant loss of water for a few reasons. Natural leak of the liner, which has to be replaced, and retrofitting that system will make a lot more sense in the long term, to be honest with you. As, you know, we go back to what are the reasons there, it's a very popular park, of course, and the improvement's done there for all users, but we know that there's an active population there that will go to the park, and the walkways were deteriorating, have been deteriorating, so it's significant improvements. The, a few things that were brought up in the past during this process of construction, eroded control, that's come up, and we did pre-bait and continually monitoring that, but we did receive two complaints about two weeks ago or so. And we also followed up as well with National, I believe it was National Grid, one of the utility companies was doing work nearby, and from our sense, there was either no baiting there or limited. Nonetheless, I take responsibility for that from my project at Warner, so we've increased the eroded control measures there. The other item, too, which we discussed, was the bus stop, and unfortunately, for a short time, the temporary fencing, which is around the entire perimeter of the park, did cut off the bus stop itself. Now, that is within the scope of work. We did adjust the temporary fencing, so it is, the bus stop is usable. But as we proceed, in most likely later this, we're in November now, so not too late, but in the coming weeks, we may have to adjust or relocate the bus stop, but we will work with the MBTA if we absolutely need to. We'd rather not, because it's a heavily utilized stop nonetheless, and I know you've received some concerns from residents about that, and, but we have addressed it and will continue to address it, because right within that area where that stop is located, is right at the side entrance, if you will, right across, at an angle from the ice cream shop, right? So that's the stop that was an issue. Again, if need be, we will work with the MBTA, we have to work with the MBTA relocate if we need to temporarily, but to say temporary, it'll only be for less than a week, so we can pour the concrete when the time comes and do any, in the springtime particularly, any of the brickwork and landscaping and so on, so they have enough room to work there.
Are you able to provide an itemized breakdown of the different parts of the contract?
Absolutely.
And then, any grant money in this, or this is just?
No, fully funded through the CIP.
Okay.
So through the city.
And the tough part is, as you said, I know there are some things, obviously sidewalks, the walkways are deteriorating, et cetera, there are things we absolutely need to address, and I get that, but the park was already gorgeous. And it's hard, especially when you hear the figures, a million dollars, it's kind of like, "We made pretty more pretty?" You know, it's really, that's the concern.
That could be a compliment, but also, but also, though, in all seriousness, though, we're also reworking the crosswalks along those sections there as well, that is also within the scope as well.
Okay. If you could please get me an itemized breakdown, I'd appreciate that.
Be happy to.
And I know that the concern that's been raised to me has been multifold, and we've talked about them, one of them being, what exactly is going on there? It was gorgeous already, what more are we doing? And I understand the structural items that need to be addressed, but, you know, if you're doing the work, you're doing the work, you might as well knock it out, but, you know, I caution on committing more funds than necessary to bring it where it needs to be. There's plenty of other things that we need to spend money on, and, like I said, the park was already pretty. So I don't know how much of a bang for a buck we're getting. There are some longer-term items that you mentioned that will, you know, save some money down the road, like with regards to the fountains, et cetera, but, you know, that's the feedback that I've been getting, so I just want... But, you know, that's the feedback that I've been getting, so I just wanted to share that.
Sure, sure, and just to echo again, it is a heavily utilized park, very popular. We hold our summer concert series there. We did not do any work over the summer. Many, many times, there's arrangements with DPW for special events. It's a very picturesque park, no. But at the end of the day as well, heavily utilized, as I mentioned, by all users, seniors as well, and making the improvements. There are many times where I drive by there, almost on a daily basis, and you see the folks that are there with young, old, mobility, no mobility issues. So it's with good care that we want to make the improvements there for the walkways, and adding an inner path along there. The additional seating as well, absolutely, without question, it's a beautiful park, and these are improvements that are needed to be done within that scope, so.
Great. Well, I appreciate the information, and if you could get me the itemization, I'd appreciate that. I don't have any other questions, I don't have my colleagues.
Just one, Councilor DePero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Sousa. Just very quickly, one of the concerns that was raised to me, and I'm sure some of my colleagues while spending some time down Whittier Drive, is during the summer concerts, they have a little bit of a tough time crossing the street, even though there's two crosswalks at each end of the park. Maybe if we could implement one in the area of Proctor Road, right in the middle of Whittier Drive, that goes right across to the island, it would be helpful to some of our seniors there that are going back and forth during the concerts, and when they're enjoying the park.
Absolutely.
I promised them I would bring that to you, so if you could look into it, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
There's no more questions?
Just go for it, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Refer that back to sponsor. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All the ayes have it. Read number 48, please, on the agenda.
Item number 48, Mr. President. Resolution offered by Council Wayne Matusky that the code enforcement check out the property at 191 Nichols Street for possible overcrowding request of neighbors in that area.
Mr. President, I'd like to invite Attorney Slattery to give us the full court press, hopefully that he did on this property.
Second motion.
Thank you. Just state your name for the record.
Good evening, Councilor. Keith Slattery, Assistant City Solicitor.
Thank you, Councilor. A few months ago, we asked you, this body asked you to do a review of this property. You saw some residents here from Nichols Street that bought this property. This is giving the Airbnb a bad name. Can you fill us in what you found at that property and?
Sure. So after you spoke to me that day, we went out and did an inspection, and we did find out that they were running in a short-term rental. They were pretty full, actually, so it was the majority of the building. Most of the rooms were rented out. They came for an application, and they used the procedure that existed under the old ordinance, the one that was just prior to the amendment that you guys had put in place. And they did comply with the building code regulations to a point, but then we realized we couldn't go any further without the zoning, and we wouldn't be able to grant the license, so we ordered them to cease and desist. We invited them up. I had a conference with the owners of 191 Nichols, Jim Soper, and Testron Planning was in, and we told them to cease and desist if they wanted any chance after the passing, if one were to pass, an amended ordinance of getting a new license, reminding them of what a problem property would be, including another strike on them renting out their property without a license. So we did a full inspection, had full communication with them. As far as we know, we haven't had any follow-up complaints. I think they are eagerly awaiting, including, they had to cancel 34 reservations that they had, waiting for their license. They did do what they were asked to do, to comply and have the building up to code, as far as egresses and the other things that are required, so.
Is it a two-family building?
The dwelling is a, hmm, I think it's illegal too.
Okay, so they're renting individual rooms inside the apartment?
Yep.
So, okay.
So they're going to have to come in front of the licensing board.
Do they seem like reasonable people? According to the people next door, they were nightmares.
They seem industrious.
They're trying to make money, if that's what you mean. How about the property itself? Was it clean?
It's in compliance with the code, the minimum standards.
Is the garage with it too?
The garage was only inspected for-
I mean, it's not a band thing or a bar in there?
No, 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 no.
Okay, so moving forward, you've corrected it, they know what they have to do, and, you know, these people, this couple from Nichols Street, have been up here four meetings in a row.
Right. So, you know, what I think, I think what Attorney Latanzi did at, you know, at the interim office.
I saw them speaking, yeah.
Yeah, I think he's let them know that they'll be invited to whatever licensing hearing.
Well, you know, Councilman, Council Slattery, I appreciate your efforts.
Sure.
And of course, with Attorney Latanzi. But now that we're voting on this new package, we've got some, somewhere to go with it, people are going to have to do the right thing. The man lost 34 reservations?
Yeah, it was in the 30s. The number was in the 30s. He had it rented out for the month.
Well, that sounds like a lot of traffic for a piece of property that people live next door to. See, this is what I, and I know my colleagues feel the same, I wouldn't want somebody next to me. Oh, yeah, it's legal, I have 34 different people in one, I don't know how long a period of time, would that be a month? Two months?
They didn't tell me, they just knew that they had to cancel their reservation.
Well, they're doing a real bang-up business, because I, you know, I'm a consultant for a small hostel hotel, and this is a slow season, let me tell you. But anyway, that's a lot of, they must be doing a good business.
They're probably good at reaching out and generating business.
Yeah, well, that's the-
Yeah. I think it's the business they want to be in.
It's the group, yeah. Well, I want to thank you very much, and now that you've addressed it, I'm going to refer this back to sponsor. Mr. President, and I want to thank the two attorneys who I mentioned earlier for their hard work on this matter, and Council, I mean, Council Slattery, thank you again for being patient. I know we're here late tonight, but, you know, this was an important issue to those people, and they have an elderly mother that lives next, with them, and you heard some of the stories. It's an animal house type thing. But I'm glad we've corrected it, and we're in the right direction, so I want to thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Council. There's no more questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to, Mr. President, I want to thank the two attorneys that worked on this and the code enforcement department, but it seems to me that, I don't know about anybody else, but if the guy lost 34 reservations in a short period of time, he's doing a bang-up business. I thought he was renting out an apartment for, like, a group of people, that's what I, they were all in their party in the six-bedroom up, and I wonder why they had problems. But this is what the new ordinance will correct, I hope. But I didn't realize it was that bad over there, you know. 34 reservations, the guy's doing a good business, but he is in compliance, and he's going to have to follow rules from now on. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I refer this back to sponsor.
All in favor, back to sponsor. Ayes have it. Thank you. Can you read 49 on the agenda?
Item number 49, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Wayne Matusky that the Boston Postmaster be made aware that in certain sections of Everett, that residents are not receiving their mail until after 5:00 p.m., and also some days when they don't receive the mail at all.
Council Matusky.
Mr. President, I have the highest respect for the mailman. Letter carriers and so forth. But, you know, we've all heard the stories that the management is following the mailman, the guy's following the car to see if he's doing the route, and, you know, it's very discouraging when you, but my father worked a part-time job at South Postal, my brother's retired from the Waltham Post Office, but, you know, my mailman recently retired. I'm not saying the replacement guy is not that good, but I never got mail after 5:00 at night in my life, all right? And, you know, and I understand they work hard, and the post office, you know, they go up on the price of a stamp, and they're putting themselves out of business, it seems to me, but, you know, I've laid this on the table, and I wanted to wait till after the election, because I had a bad experience just a few years ago, and I had the FBI to my house, the whole nine yards, okay? I got an apology letter from the post office. Somebody at the Chelsea Distribution Center thought it was a good idea to keep my state representative mail from being delivered. And, you know, it was all in trays in my hallway, six trays, along with donations from various unions. And I wanted to wait till after election, because I mailed a few postcards out, not a lot, but not like I did for that race. So the FBI came to my house. This will be a brief story, if anybody wants, I think you're all interested at this point.
You have three and a half minutes.
I got three and a half minutes to go.
Yes, you do.
Needless to say, the trays are in my house, the two FBI agents are there. I had the census book, I said, all right, here you go, sir, pulled one out. The other guy looked it up, oh, yeah, Mary Lou Higgins lives at a certain address, so turns out, it was one of the biggest smear campaigns in the history. Not only did I get lambasted by the post office, but I have a lot of respect for the post office, okay? Everybody, oh, it's a federal offense. Well, guess what? They said, well, the guy that did it to you, you know, he's got prostate cancer. I said, yeah, but my father's dying of cancer, and he lives downstairs. It was a creepy thing. I should have went to the Globe, the Herald, and straightened this mess out in Everett, where some dirty politics was being played. Needless to say, the issue of the mailmen in this city, even being overworked, now they've got a lot of vacation time, I don't know what it is, but there's some problems here. And maybe I'm wrong, maybe you guys are happy with your mail. I heard it all day, Election Day. Wayne, you're right, there's something wrong with the post office. And you see the line on Norwood Street. I forbid you go in there, and somebody goes on a coffee break, you're in line for half an hour. But not to put the post office down, I don't want to get that way, but, anyway, I'd like to refer this to the Postmaster General in Boston, let him know what's going on here.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Read number 50 on the agenda.
Item number 50, Mr. President, that the, resolution offered by Council Wayne Matusky that the Board of Health of Building Department be notified that there have been complaints of rats in different areas of the city.
Council Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. You heard the community development director say that they have in place a road and control program. And Mr. Soper in the Building Department has been unbelievable. Everywhere that I told him there was an issue, he sent the team down there, they put some traps out, you know, and with the winter coming, hopefully these rodents will disappear a little bit. So I'd like to refer this back to sponsor, thank you.
Second, all in favor, back to sponsor. Ayes have it. We'll go to new business. Please read 52 on the agenda.
Item number 52, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Michael McGlaughlin that the Chief Financial Officer appear at the next Ways and Means Committee meeting to discuss the mayor's automobile stipend.
Council McGlaughlin?
Mr. President-
Would you have a pleasure with this piece?
On the motion, can we amend this by striking out Eric, the CFO, and add in Mayor DiMaria to this item, please? Make a motion that we strike on. I want to remove the Chief Financial Officer, and I will say why in a second, but if we can make that motion to remove him and add the mayor.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All the ayes have it.
So this issue is not a Mike McGlaughlin issue, it's the residents of Everett have asked me numerous times about this topic. And remember in August, July, rather, the mayor came before us and asked for a stipend for his car allowance, and we voted on that in good faith. But numerous times, we have seen that the same police officer the mayor told us would not be driving him around any longer, is still driving him around, as late as last Monday at a ribbon-cutting ceremony that several of us attended. So I would like to ask the mayor, because after having a conversation with Eric Demas last week on the phone, where he shared a lot of helpful information to me, I'd like to ask the mayor some specific questions about this automobile stipend, because I honestly believe that we got this one wrong. I think we should go back to him submitting invoices to show the mileage that he's used and the gas that he has used, and then we can reimburse him from that. That being said, we can't do that till the next fiscal year budget. I'd like to ask the mayor some questions, and I'll make a motion to refer this to Ways and Means, so that the people of Everett can get the answers that they've repeatedly asked me for. Thank you.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All the ayes have it. Read number 53 on the agenda, please.
Item number 53, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Ward Six, excuse me, Council Michael McGlaughlin, that the DPW check to see that all street signs in the city are adequate and also not missing from any street corner.
Council McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. President, as I traveled throughout the city this past several months, I noticed on a lot of streets, the signs are missing. I know several that are off of Botham Street, Locust Street, there's several streets that come to mind immediately that are missing the street sign. And got a bit of an emergency or any reason why somebody is looking for a street sign, they can't find what street they're trying to go down. So I think we've all seen a street or multiple streets in our neighborhood that are missing the street signs, so let us know what street is off of what intersection. So I'd ask the DPW or someone to do a citywide survey to be able to come up with what streets are missing signs, and to replace those signs before the winter months, especially with the winter coming, the snow coming. We're going to have plow drivers in the city of Everett plowing streets. If somebody gets dispatched to a specific street and they can't find it, we're not going to get that street resolved for the residents. So I'd lay this on the table till the first meeting in December, and hopefully that the DPW can identify the streets that need to be repaired and begin the repairs by the first meeting in December. Thank you.
Have a second on that? All in favor? The ayes have it. The last piece on the agenda, 54.
What's the special meeting about?
If you don't mind, it's to set the tax rate and the assesses thing. So that will be a special meeting before the next one. It's all right.
It's okay, Council.
You'll be getting that shortly. Item number 54, Mr. President, is an ordinance offered by Council Richard Delasola Jr. as President, that the Everett City Council hereby amends the current driveway ordinance, section 17-58.
Mr. President, I haven't seen anything yet, so I move to postpone this for two weeks.
Yes. The city clerk, just so you know, Council here to ask to just to be postponed till the next meeting.
Okay, so let's do that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All the ayes have it.
Move for adjournment?
I know everybody's in favor of that. Thank you very much.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
[inaudible]